Are you ready, Scott? All right. I'm going to call the common council meeting on September 8th at 7:32. First up is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and ever.
All right. Roll call, please. Tracy.
Alder Aratafrata?
Yes.
Alder Clouter?
Here.
He's here.
Alder Gerhart?
Here.
Alder Krausy?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Schroeder?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Not here.
Delayed. Alder Udell?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Sarah, was Shannon on the public safety meeting?
Yeah.
He was. Yeah.
All right. She's maybe having some technical problems. All right. Before we get to number four, just a few reminders. The members of the public that are speaking have three minutes to talk, and so I will cut you off. There's a lot of people that want to speak, and we need to be respectful of everyone, so I will be enforcing that as always. And just a reminder, I know with Zoom meetings especially, it is challenging, so just reminders to wait to be sure that I call on you before you speak and don't interrupt others. Stick to the item that's actually on the agenda. And then, you know, it's okay if people disagree in here and it's not all unanimous. Just know that the meetings have been running way longer than they have in the past, and I've heard a lot of people comment about that, and so we want to try and be as efficient as possible. So I will start with the mayoral proclamations on number four. And the first one is recognizing Cycle September. Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Pittsburgh's scenic beauty; and whereas Pittsburgh was recognized by the League of American Bicycleists as a bronze bicycle community in 2012 and a silver bicycle-friendly community in 2015 and 2019; and whereas the current COVID-19 pandemic has disrupted our economy and the lives of residents, increasing mental stress and eliminating many opportunities for needed exercise, including National Bike to Work Day and Bike to Work Week last May; and whereas the prevalence of the SARS-CoV-2 virus has caused an increased interest in bicycling for transportation and recreation; and whereas throughout Pittsburgh and greater Madison, there are many employers who value the health and productivity of their employees and regularly provide encouragement for healthy recreation; and whereas the League of American Bicycleists has rescheduled National Bike to Work Week to September 21st to 27th, 2020, and Bike to Work Day to Tuesday, September 22nd, for 2020 due to the pandemic; and whereas the City of Madison, Madison Area Transportation Planning Board, Madison Bikes, Bike Pittsburgh, Sun Prairie Moves, and Wisconsin Bike Fed, a partner to sponsor and promote Cycle September, a bike-anywhere, anytime competition for workplaces of all sizes to encourage safe, healthy outdoor recreation. Now therefore, I, Aaron Richardson, Mayor of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin, hereby proclaim September 2020 a Cycle September in the City of Pittsburgh, and I urge all Pittsburgh employees to organize workplace teams and rise often and as far as they can for health, fun, and process throughout Cycle September, proclaim this 8th day of September, 2020. And we have former mayor Steve Arnold here, also a member of Wisconsin Bike Fed, to say a few things.
I'm told I can take off my mask if I stay six feet from you for this. Thank you, Mayor Richardson, for this recognition. This evening, I'm representing Wisconsin Bike Fed and Bike Pittsburgh, our state and local advocacy organizations. Around 2000, Pittsburgh developed a bike and ped plan. Updates were adopted by the council in 2008 and 2017. Recognizing the work done by city government and many local partners, Pittsburgh received a Bronze Bicycle Friendly Community Award in 2012 from the League of American Bicycleists and Silver in 2015 and 2019. In 2019, Bike Pittsburgh, the Chamber, and the city government formalized their partnership by resolutions of their boards, including your predecessors on the council, and became a Wisconsin Active Together community. This Cycle September proclamation is a continuation of that partnership, encouraging residents to step up their riding for all the health, environmental, and economic benefits, but foremost for fun. Bike Pittsburgh and the Bike Fed will continue to work with the city and the Chamber on encouragement, engineering, education, evaluation planning, and equity to make bicycling easier, safer, and more fun in Pittsburgh. With you, we hope to score a gold Bicycle Friendly Community Award in the next year or two. Thank you again.
Thank you. I do know that I'd love it if we could become a gold community. That'd be something that I'd really like, and I know we're working on some things to hopefully get that.
Smile with your eyes. And we have one more proclamation, recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. And I am going to read a paragraph, and then either Joe or Julia is going to read it in
Spanish. So we're recognizing September 15th through October 15th, 2020, as Hispanic Heritage Month. All right. Whereas each year, the United States recognizes National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th to celebrate the history, traditions, and the economic, cultural, and social contributions that Hispanic citizens have brought to our nation.
Cada año, los Estados Unidos de América reconoce el mes de herencia hispana desde el 15 de septiembre hasta el 15 de octubre para celebrar la historia, tradiciones, y la contribución económica, social, y cultural que la comunidad y ciudadanos hispanos han aportado y aportan a nuestra nación y...
And whereas the story of Hispanics and Latinos is the story of America, and that they have contributed in various fields, from the arts, sciences, sports, and culture to the economy, have encompassed the American dream, and have brought the energy and drive of recent immigrants to this country.
Además, la historia de los hispanos y los latinos en la historia de los Estados Unidos, ya que han contribuido y contribuían en varios campos, desde las artes, las ciencias, los deportes, y la cultura hasta la economía, logrado el sueño americano y han aportado la energía y el impulso de los últimos inmigrantes a este país y...
Whereas Latinos serve in government at every level, from school boards to the State House, from city councils and mayoral offices to Congress.
Además, los latinos participan políticamente en el gobierno y en todos los niveles, desde las juntas escolares hasta la gobernación, desde los ayuntamientos y las alcaldías hasta el congreso y...
And whereas this month represents the anniversary of independence for Chile, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Mexico, and Nicaragua.
Que en este mes se celebra el aniversario de la independencia de Chile, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, México, y Nicaragua y...
And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is one of enormous pride for over 58 million Hispanics Latinos living in the United States, comprising 18.1% of the population.
Además, el mes de la herencia hispana representa un enorme orgullo para más de 58 millones de hispanos, latinos, que viven en los Estados Unidos y representan 18% de la población y...
Whereas the U.S. Census Bureau estimates that by 2060, Latino people will compromise over 28% of the total of the U.S. population, with 119 million residing in the United States. And?
Además, la Oficina de Census de los Estados Unidos estima que para el año 2060, las personas latinas representaran más de 28% de la población total de los Estados Unidos, con 119 millones de residentes residirán en los Estados Unidos y...
Whereas Latinos are the fastest-growing constituency in Wisconsin, with more than 364,000 Latinos calling Wisconsin home. Pittsburgh is fortunate, among its population, a dynamic Hispanic-Latino community, 17% of its population, that plays an important role in our city's economy and society, and?
Además, los latinos son el distrito electoral de crecimiento más rápido en Wisconsin, con más de 364,000 latinos que consideran Wisconsin su estado y su casa, y la ciudad de Pittsburgh in Wisconsin es pionera de contar con una población hispana dinámica que representa un 17% de sus residentes y que aporta un rol importante en la economía y la sociedad de nuestra ciudad.
Whereas we encourage all residents of Pittsburgh to recognize and applaud the many contributions made by our Hispanic-Latino community to enhance the quality of life in our city.
Además, la ciudad de Pittsburgh reconoce y celebra las numerosas contribuciones aportadas por nuestra comunidad hispana para mejorar la calidad de vida en nuestra ciudad y...
Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and common council recognize the month of September 15th through October 15th, 2020, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
Por lo tanto, se decreta que el alcalde y el consilio de concejales reconocen el mes de 15 de septiembre hasta el 15 de octubre, de 2020, como el mes de la herencia hispana en la ciudad de Pittsburgh, Wisconsin.
Be it further resolved that the mayor and common council congratulate our Hispanic-Latino community on this significant month, and thank them for their contributions to the vibrancy of the City of Pittsburgh and greater Madison.
Por último, se resuelve que el alcalde y el consilio de concejales felicitan a nuestra comunidad hispana en este mes tan significativo, y les agradece por su contribución vibrante a la ciudad de Pittsburgh y los suburbios de Madison.
All right. Gracias.
De nada.
And I know we have a few people that are online to speak. I don't know if Joe or Julia, if you want to say anything first, and then we have a couple of speakers as well. Joe, do you have anything you want to say?
Oh, no. So I want to thank the City of Pittsburgh for doing this proclamation, and we need to remember that 4,000 Latinos live in the City of Pittsburgh, and we need to, and they are part of our vibrant community. And so I would say, thank you, gracias, for elegir Pittsburgh como su ciudad y a celebrar el mes de la herencia hispana. Gracias.
All right. Joe, is there anything you wanted to say?
Sure. I mean, I'll say that I always take everything from an asset-based perspective, and I know that the pure talent that exists, the resiliency, the hard work, the creativity of our Latino, Latinx, business owners, nonprofit leaders, youth workers, educators, parents, and youth is a force to be reckoned with, and I'm proud to be in the presence of many of them today, and, you know, look forward to see what the future holds for, you know, what folks will yet contribute to this city.
All right. And I know we have Lupita is one of our people online, and Luis is with her as well. Would you like to say something?
Yeah. We want to thank all the Pittsburgh elected officials. Thank you. And, well, obviously because of the situation that we're living in right now, we as a radio station usually take on a whole bunch of summer events, and this year, we will only have two virtual events, and you guys are cordially invited to attend with us. Lupita has the info.
Thank you, Mayor Richardson, and thank you, Alder Maldonado and Aratafrata, for making this Hispanic Heritage celebration a tradition now, doing a proclamation every year here at the City of Pittsburgh, and we really appreciate that, and we truly feel like a City of Pittsburgh residents now. So thank you for recognizing and for highlighting the contribution that the residents of City of Pittsburgh, mostly Latinos, are doing to vibrant City. And definitely, you can drive by Fish Hatchery Road or Mackey Road, and you will find out that there's a Latino business owner, or there's a neighborhood that is, you know, with a lot of Latino families. So thank you for that and for all your work at the City of Pittsburgh Common Council. I contribute with City of Pittsburgh once a week, Fridays mostly with the Descubriendo Contigo Noticias y Recursos en Español, which is a TV show that thanks to Alder Aratafrata, PACT TV is producing the show every Friday, so we can inform and have news in español for the Pittsburgh residents. So I'm proud and glad that I'm part of this project. It's been almost a year. I guess it's a year. We already have like a one-year anniversary, so I hope we can celebrate soon. But anyhow, thank you so much for highlighting the Hispanic Heritage Celebration, and like Luis mentioned, this year, we only want to have two events. Viva Mexico Festival is going to be...
Virtual.
Virtual next Wednesday, September 16th, which is the commemoration of the Mexican Independence Day, and Mayor Richardson and Alder Maldonado and Arata are invited, and all of you are most welcome to join us. It's going to be via Facebook Live and as well on our two frequencies, La Movida 94.5 and 1480 AM at 5:00 PM with the Mexican Council, the Council, Mayor, as well, Merced Mayor and Merced Dade County Executive. And also, on October 16th at noon, our traditional Hispanic Heritage luncheon, so as well, it's going to be virtual, and I hope you can, you guys can join us. I will be making sure to send out the invitation to each one of you. So thank you again, and thank you, Julia and Joe, for the recognition.
All right. Thank you. And we also have Altazar online.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Excellent. So I'm just going to read through my notes. I hope that's okay. I'll go very, very fast. So thank you, Alders, for your service. Thank you, Mayor Aaron Richardson, and, you know, Julia Aratafrata and Joe Maldonado. I know I'm supposed to call you by your last names, but, you know, for me, you are Julia and Joe, you know, just, you know, continuing the Latino tradition. So September is a very important month for all of us who consider ourselves Hispanic or Latino or Latinx. This is a month where we celebrate our heritage. When I was in Mexico, I was considered Mexican. The moment I crossed the border to this country, I was considered a Hispanic, Latino, or Latinx. We were not born here. We have chosen to be here. Our destiny has brought us here. Some of us to the city of Madison, some other people to the city of Pittsburgh. Our Hispanic community, especially those who cannot get any federal support, have suffered a lot through COVID-19, but they have stayed strong. They're a fighting community. The Hispanic community adds a lot to Dade County, as many of you already mentioned. The Hispanic community adds enormously to the city of Pittsburgh. We have business owners. We have adults learning English. We have adults studying very hard to get their GT. Adults working hard to pass their certificate exam. Folks working very hard to get the CD license, and many folks wanting to have a better life with sustainable living wishes. The Hispanic community enormously supports towards the economic development of this city. We are proud to be part of this country. Let us celebrate Latin accents. I always say, you can lose everything, but never lose your accent. That's what makes you who you are. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for recognizing our culture, a very strong community, a community that once we come together with other communities, we can make the change. So thanks a lot. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. And I believe that's everyone we have, Scott, for the proclamations, anyway. We do have a number of people who want to speak on non-agenda items. I'll start with people here in council. You can just walk up to the microphone here. I have Tamadee first, and then Laura Cataldo will be after that.
Thank you, Alders, and City Council for having us here again. Supervisor Krausy, thank you for attending. We appreciate seeing you as well. Folks, your constituents are hurting. The kids in Pittsburgh are hurting. Your constituents are looking for someone to do something. Your constituents are looking for someone to listen. For two hours, parents testified at the Public Health Madison and Dade County Board meeting a week ago tomorrow. After two hours of testimony, we were cut off from further testimony. That board was told that it could not answer questions or speak because of pending lawsuits, many lawsuits, including them and their entity. That is a dereliction of duty. So we are here today, your constituents and your residents of Pittsburgh, asking you to do something about this. You will hear from parents who are having extreme difficulty at home in a virtual setting. I am one of those parents having an incredibly difficult time, an incredibly difficult time. I'm not willing to share details. Many are not willing to share details in public. But you'll hear from people today who can tell you that they and their families are in pain. We'll share some of those stories with you tonight. We'll ask you questions. We'll share data, and we'll ask you to do something about it. The same and more parents were lined up to speak at the county board hearing last Thursday, the county board meeting last Thursday, but the county board, however, one month after so, after giving Public Health Madison and Dade County over $1 million and an additional 57 staff positions, would not even let us speak. So we appreciate this opportunity to talk to you, Alders in the City of Pittsburgh, to talk to you, Supervisor Krausy, about the need to do something for your constituents. Unelected bureaucrats made the decision to close schools in Pittsburgh and Dade County. Elected county officials are not willing to engage in any sensible or reasonable discussion about this issue. So we need you. You've all been sent a draft of a resolution asking you to support parents who want to send their kids to school in safe, in-person learning environments. You are being asked as policymakers elected to support your constituents in Pittsburgh to do something about this. Please support the resolution for the reasons that you will hear yet tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I have Laura next, and after that is Nicholas Dimaselli.
Good evening. My name is Laura Cataldo. My husband and I have lived in Pittsburgh with our two children for the last 16 years and are very active in our neighborhood and within the community. I'm here this evening asking your support on a draft resolution to address Order Number Nine. While the intent of the order was in the interests of public health, there are a number of elements that are not reasonable and not in the best interest of the children and families here in Pittsburgh and Dade County. Both the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Centers for Disease Control strongly support students returning to school. It is heartbreaking to see our ninth-grade daughter starting her high school experience from her bedroom, and our fifth-grade son staring at his iPad in isolation in his bedroom, unable to engage with other students or teachers. Like many, they have exhibited signs of stress and depression from this ongoing isolation. And like 85% of the families in the two schools we had enrolled, we preferred having our students in person as the necessary precautions had been put in place. Over the last six months, both of the schools that my children attend went through great effort to put into place the necessary precautions and measures to protect both the students and the staff of the schools. Even though many schools, like ours, put the required measures in place, such as 15-student limits, physical spacing, sanitation, minimizing mingling, and dedicated teachers and support staff, Order Nine does not allow the schools to open for in-person learning. Yet, the very same classrooms are being used by MSCR, YMCA, and Wisconsin Youth Company for all-day childcare programs that include virtual school support. The MSCR program has 17 schools in the program and even offers school buses. Pittsburgh students can attend the programs at Madison or Verona schools for a cost of $150 to $215 a week. By allowing childcare programs but not classroom instruction, Order Nine does not make sense and is creating a huge disadvantage for many Pittsburgh families that cannot afford an extra $600 to $800 a month for this daycare experience. If the schools can be used in this way, why can't the schools, every school, public and private, in Dade County, be evaluated on the same criteria so they can open? We need to encourage Dade County to allow each school the option to offer in-person learning if they can demonstrate a viable plan is in place. Milwaukee recently went through this process to open both private and public schools. I ask you to support the adoption of the draft resolution and help us ensure a safe return to school for all students. I appreciate your willingness to listen, and thank you for your support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. I have Nicholas next, and then Lisa Newman-Pudlow after that.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having us in here tonight. I wanted to bring up just one aspect of the grievance, and I know my daughters, they go to a private school right here in 53711, the same zip code that I live in, so it's Pittsburgh. And we feel voiceless right now. We have done everything we can to bring the dialogue to our elected representatives at the county level, and we need, we need a voice. We're doing everything we can to try to get our kids back in the school, but just as the previous speaker had mentioned, our schools cannot be used for in-person education, yet you can take the same amount of kids, or more, put them in that classroom, let them do their virtualized option together, and that is acceptable to Dade County. These things don't make sense to us, and all the while, in the interest of public health, we can't open schools. They say on the other side of the mouth that you can use those classrooms for something else with just as many kids or more, and that's okay. So here we are as residents of the City of Pittsburgh, trying to have a voice, and in the light of obvious things that don't make sense to us, we are just being told to eat your peas and send your, send your kids to the online option. I know from my experience with my girls, it's substandard. They go to a private school, and I can say that it's much better than it was previous at the public school last year. I can say that with certainty, but so many families are not like ours. And I know this public option, or this online option, it is not equal, and we need, we need help. We need help. We don't have a voice at this table with our elected representatives enough at all levels. And I'm hoping and I'm asking that our Alder people and our mayor, the city council at large, help us have this voice, because our, our kids can't achieve the type of scholastic goals that the Janelle Heinrich of the county, she's achieved great scholastic success at multiple schools. Our kids may never have that option if we continue to tell them that this online thing is all they get. We need your help in having that voice at every single level, and that's what we're asking you to stand up for the, for the draft resolution. We need you to help us, get behind us, and help get these kids back in school, because it is insanely important. They're missing out on very, very big years at this age. We need your help. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I have Lisa next, and after that is Phil Anderson.
Thank you for listening to us. If I could ask of anything, please Google MSCR cares program. Look at the requirements that, what the Madison School District has. They have 15 students per classroom. They have a bus. These are all more strict requirements than the private schools even have. These are all more strict requirements than the private schools even have. All of these private schools have, they, we all had virtual options. Where, our Redeemer, where my son goes, we had an, our, we had a virtual option, 9% of the parents picked it, 91% wanted in-person instruction, and that was their choice. So, all of these schools had options. We ask you, as elected officials, please support us, read our resolution, take action to it. We need, we need your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Phil.
Good evening, and thanks for allowing all of us to speak. I'm here tonight as a resident of Pittsburgh, as a father whose children have come through the private school system and public school system in Dane County, including St. James School and MacGyver Art, and my son graduated from Exploration Academy, pardon me, my mask is slipping a little bit, and I'm on the Board of Exploration Academy. What's clear to me, and the reason I'm here, is that people are crying out for leadership. In at least two cases this year, it's been evident where an elected body of officials, the State Assembly, the State Legislature, previously this year, and now the Dane County Board, has basically delegated their authority to a non-elected group of people, and then taken their hands off of the whole situation. You've seen the testimony earlier to, from previous people about the facts of the situation, but I'd also like to point out that the public health Dane County and Madison is not the only place where science can be read and interpreted. Among the 1,500, 2,000 people that are involved in this movement right now, objecting to Order, Emergency Order Number Nine, are scientists, lawyers, people that work in finance, teachers, people of various backgrounds. It's not left up to the government to, to delegate to a non-elected board, who then has the only possible interpretation of science and data. We need to stand up and take back the authority that we already delegated to our elected officials, because they're, they have been derelict in their duties. And lastly, the reason I'm standing up tonight is because I live in New Fountains, which you guys are all familiar with, on the far western end of Pittsburgh. Largely a working-class, very diverse neighborhood. I've lived there for over four years. I know a lot of the residents. A lot of those folks are sending their kids to private schools, to St. James, to Lighthouse Christian School. A lot of those folks are shift workers, people that don't have the luxury of staying home and, and taking care of their kids, or making sure their kids are watching, you know, and hooking up to the schools that they're supposed to be doing. Those people are really left behind, and they don't have the, the luxury of addressing you here tonight, because they're working and taking care of their kids. So, we need to exert leadership, and frankly, that's what we expect of you. We all know that you didn't do this. However, in this case, this is the forum that we can, that we can, that we can campaign to and ask you to stand up for the interests of the citizens here, and at least declare, I mean, at the beginning of this meeting tonight, we had proclamations for various things, all very worthy, I'm sure. We're just asking you to do the same thing and stand behind the residents of Pittsburgh who have been wronged in terms of how this was, how this was taken, how this took place, and, and to the data that supposedly supports it. Stand up for us and show some leadership, because that's what the people of Pittsburgh, Dane County, and Wisconsin expect. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the room here that wants to speak on a non-agenda item? That's all the slips I have for non-agenda items, anyway. I do believe we have someone, at least one person online, Scott. All right, who's that?
Francis Huntley Cooper.
All right, Francis Huntley Cooper, you are up. You're on mute, we can't hear you yet.
Sorry.
All right, now we can hear you. Yep.
I don't think I'm here to speak on what they were speaking on. I don't know what resolution they were speaking on. I'm here to speak in support of Resolution 17020. I'm Francis Huntley Cooper.
Hold on, Francis, I thought this was a non-agenda item, sorry. It is? Oh, this is, so you want to speak on something on the agenda or something not on the agenda?
On the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is just for non-agenda.
I think they were speaking, I thought the other people were speaking about a school issue.
That was not something that's actually on the agenda.
Oh, I, I didn't, I didn't understand it, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so I'm here to speak, sorry, I'm here to speak on, in support of Resolution R170-20, and I had sent a little blurb, a memo, because I wasn't sure if I would be able to make the meeting.
Yeah, that's, we're gonna do that in a few minutes here, I think everything else.
You don't have to do that one if I can get a chance to say a few words here.
Well, we kind of need to do it all together at the same time, if that's all right.
Okay, so you're telling me to fold off right now?
Yep, yep, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you. All right, then I believe we have nothing else on the non-agenda items. So, we can go to this consent agenda quick. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, is there anything that anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yep, which one?
I'd like to remove the, the draft minutes and also R15420.
All right. Anything else? All right, all in favor of approving everything except the draft minutes and 15420, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, those are approved. And then, do you want to just do the motion, Gabriella, for the minutes first, maybe? And then you can tell us what you want to change.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for August 11th, 2020.
August 25th, actually.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at draft minutes. Motion to approve the draft minutes for August 25th, 2020.
I think I heard. All right, is there something you want to fix on that?
Yeah, just under the public appearances for non-agenda items, I was hoping that we could add, before Order Number Nine, add the Public Health Madison Dane County, before that, just to clarify that it's a, a county order and not a city order.
All right, sounds good. That it? All right, then all in favor of approving the minutes as, as changed or amended, say aye?
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, that's approved. And then, you want to do a motion for the next one?
Motion to approve, the, you know, what do you call it? You couldn't approve the referral of?
Yeah.
Resolution 15420.
Perfect. I need a second first, I need a second first.
Second.
All right, all right, what did you want to add?
I was hoping we could also refer it to Transportation and Transit and Resource Conservation Commission.
All right, sounds good. Anything else on this one? All right, everyone in favor of approving with the additional referrals, say aye?
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, those are, that's also approved, and we can move on to the administrator report. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. I'd like to first state that, very happy to report that the staff's been healthy and productive since we last met. Our work continues to go unchanged due to our working conditions. Several staff, as you know, are working remotely. There are a good number of our staff, including our clerks, that are in on a regular basis, working with the public in several areas, so I would like to thank them for that, they're doing a great job. We're also having a lot of meetings by appointment with other staff in the city, so we'd like to thank them for coming into the office and, and putting themselves sort of in harm's way during this time. The other thing I'd like to report on is the construction activity. As you all know, our east-west-north side, main corridors are under major construction. That construction's going very well and will be completed by the end of November this year. At least, the current phase will be completed by the end of November this year. And staff has been doing a good job keeping us up to speed on issues that pop up from time to time. So, thanks to Bill and Department of Public Works for all their hard work in getting those projects moving and keeping them moving. And then, thirdly, the only other thing I have is that recently, we've been getting a lot of requests from Alders to our staff, and with those requests, there's been requests for short turnaround periods. I would request that any alder giving assignments to staff or directing staff in any way, that you work those through me. And please note that the timeline isn't a quick turnaround, all the staff has a lot of work to do on a regular daily basis. And so, if you have projects for them, work through me, I'll work through staff, and I'll keep you posted on the prog, progress of those projects. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, we can keep moving here. Plan Commission, we haven't met. Anything you want to add, Tom? All right, nothing there. All right, Public Works, Sarah.
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution R14520, the acceptance and construction bid for pickleball courts at Fahy Fields.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Say it by Randy. I know Public Works was a 2-2 tie. Did Park approve?
Parks did approve.
Did Finance? Did Finance approve? Yes, okay, all right. Do you want to speak to this, Sarah?
Sure, this was part of the 2020 CIP project, and it's just constructing eight pickleball courts at Fahy Fields. There's that new development, and McGaw was extended to be even a larger facility as the Fahy Fields project kind of moved forward. So, these amenities are part of the 2012, are, were included as part of the 2012 McGaw master plan. There's hope that they'll tie in then with two additional athletic fields in the future.
All right, we also have Scott Endel online for questions, or did you want to add anything, Scott?
No, I think that's, I think that's fine. Certainly, the, the amenities that are going to be included in this project are, are not only for the pickleball, but as Sarah mentioned, for future, future use of this park property, both on the north and the southern end, so I guess that's what I would add.
All right, any questions or comments at all? Tom?
Yeah, this project, I want to start by saying, I'm in favor of the pickleball courts, there's no question about that. I do have a couple of questions, though, that I think are pertinent, and they obviously brought to my attention through other people in my, my area. The way this was handled was a lump sum, lump sum. Scott, is that right? Is that correct, that this went out for bid as a lump sum?
That is correct, Tom, that's correct.
Okay. The question I have on that for other Alders as well, you may want to take a look at this. You want to remember that you're talking maybe about utilities, you might talk about plumbing, asphalt, fencing. I'm having a little heartburn over the cost of this. We're talking, what was it, $670,000 for a project like this? And it's not a line-item project. In other words, keep in mind, Alders, that it's a lump sum. You give it to one individual, like Joel Daniels Construction, and what happens when we get a change order? What happens if there are more questions that we don't have answers for? I just think it was a bad bid. I think that 670,000, I did talk to some other contractors, and they're like, where did they get these numbers from? And it should be more like around five, 400,000 or 500, not 670. I guess what I'm saying, Scott, is when we do these, I think there has to be more accountability, and we're not seeing, we're not seeing it in this case. And if you can help me with that, that's fine, but this was just a lump sum. You just put it out there, and all of a sudden, Joel Daniels gets it, which is fine, their rep, I'm well aware about Joel Daniels. They grew up in my neighborhood, when I was in Westmoreland. But this isn't the way to put this out for bid. And I'm surprised Finance and Parks didn't, maybe you did, Sarah, you can help me with that, maybe they questioned it more, but I don't like the way this was out there at all. And I think we're going to get a lot of unanswered questions for a big project. I've never heard of anything like this in the city, a lump sum? So, we give everything to one individual, and then he or she, whoever, goes through and gets other, other contractors? And what recourse do we have here? Maybe you can address that, Scott.
Scott, before you do that, actually, hold on, Scott. I did, I do have a few people who have submitted emails I forgot to read before we got into that, sorry. I'm going to read those quick, and then I can let either Scott or Pat speak to the anonymous questions. First, hello, Mayor Richardson and council members. The Capital Area Pickleball Association, with membership of over 500 people, would like to add its enthusiastic support for the project under consideration. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country, with exponential participation levels reached over the last few years. It is played on a court about one-third the size of a tennis court, with paddles and a special type of football. Growth is fueled by several unique factors. It is much easier to play than tennis, and is almost always played as doubles, so the physical demands are manageable for a broad range of abilities. Participation is almost evenly split between male and female, and appeals to all ages. It is inexpensive to get started, equipment is less than $100, and also has a very social element to it, evidenced by significant play involving large groups. While early participation came from the over 60 age bracket, the lack of places to play has been the biggest limiting factor in its growth. Early attempts to accommodate pickleball play were due to dual-stripe tennis courts. However, this solution caused problems, conflict with tennis players, and not a very good pickleball experience. The plan being considered for eight courts is very encouraging, but if the budget requires cutbacks, fewer courts is preferable to a long delay or cuts in court design, it's probably more important to have side fences and wind screens. Pickleballs are very light and can be a problem than eight courts. Lack of a place to play could soon be seen as a negative for the community. Deerfield, Stoughton, Cross Plains, Oregon, Sun Prairie, Madison, and Wanakee have already built dedicated pickleball courts or are looking at projects. Known dedicated courts are located in Verona, McFarland, or Pittsburgh. As a promoter of the game of pickleball, Kappa has been providing beginning lessons and clinics to help encourage area residents of all ages to learn and play the game. With a membership of over 500, the organization is able to bring significant resources to help build use of new courts. A solid nucleus of loyal players has already been established with the play at the Pittsburgh Community Center. Members of our organization have also been involved in helping fill budget gaps with solicitation of private funding on several projects. Please consider reaching out to Kappa if you believe there is a role we might play in getting this project approved. Rico Gagen is the president, and Shelley Reynolds is the vice president and a Pittsburgh resident. I also have, from Bruce and Carol, Carol in Pittsburgh. I am for the proposal of putting in dedicated pickleball courts at McGaw Park. The game is exploiting its popularity, and Pittsburgh is woefully underserved. My wife and I back a yes vote for new courts. And then I also have Chip Davenport on Oz from Pittsburgh. My wife and I strongly support the proposal to install pickleball courts at McGaw Park. Pickleball is fast-growing and popular, especially among seniors. Most mass and area communities have added pickleball courts in the last few years, Middleton, Stoughton, Sun Prairie, Windsor, et cetera. Pittsburgh definitely needs to do the same to give its residents a local place to play. Thank you. And I don't know if Pat or Scott, you want to respond to that?
Mayor, I can weigh in on that.
Great.
Tom, I guess to respond to your statements earlier, the, this is let know differently than any other Public Works project would, where we did a request for bids. So, the project as a whole goes out to the public, meaning the various companies that would like to bid on this project. The bids are submitted, the bids are submitted on a project basis, so all components would be included, just like in a road project. When we went out to Fish Hatchery Road, we didn't separate, you know, the retaining walls from the lighting, or the roadway, or anything like that, it went to bid as one project. That's how this project was bid. In this case, Joel Daniels was selected as the low bidder, and the low qualified bidder in this case, and that's how we proceed. If there is a situation where a board, the Board of Public Works, or the Parks Commission, or the council wants to go- the council wants to go with a bid that's not the low bid, that would be appropriate for that entity to do that at any time they chose. But in this situation, it was submitted as a project, as all of our projects are submitted. And was, Joe Daniels was a low bidder.
Scott, do you want to speak to, there's more than just the pickleball courts that's part of this. I believe there's also a bunch of Public Works things and water, those types of things as well.
Yeah, like I say, the, the pickle, this project does include some additional, additional amenities to the park, which would support the pickleball court along with the future athletic fields to the north and the south. There's, there's a path system within this development. There's, there's a 34-car parking lot, which is included in this project along with some, some culverts. If you've been out there, you, you know that there's some drainage ditches. So in order to connect the middle portion to both the northern and the southern, we need some culverts to, to carry the paths, if you would, so that we have access to both the north and the south athletic fields as those fields become developed and as future, future, you know, residents and customers use those facilities. You know, just as a clarification of the numbers, the bid was $548,282. And we did include a 10% contingency as the finance department requests or recommends. So the total is $602,282 for the, for the entire project.
All right, Julia, I saw your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I want to clarify a lot of issue about this resolution. And Finance Committee, we discussed this for more than half an hour. We asked a lot of question and I haven't, some of my question, there were no answer. But when this project was approved last year, the CIP, it was approved for $320,000 to be paid with park fee. Now, this project is coming to us with a value of $602,000, almost double. When we asked this question in Finance, Scott told us that last year, the $320,000 include only the eight pickleball courts. It didn't include the parking lot, it didn't include the pass, it didn't include the remediation or the culverts. So my question is that, you know, so we should be more careful when we prepare this bid because I approved something last year for 320 and now it's coming to me for approval from 602. There were a lot of missing in the previous, you know, in the, in the, in the CIP budget that now we are adding all this, you know, we are in the parking lot, we are in the pass, you know, but then we are not in the original videos, in the original, you know, proposal in the CIP last year. So we have to do better on doing this. And then when I asked the question, why eight court? He, Scott didn't give an answer because he told me that it was directed for eight. So my question is why we are building eight, we're not six or four, you know? And I am not against pickleball court. I am against that this project, I agree with Tom in this case, that, you know, it was approved for 320 and now we have 602,000. And who knows what else can come when they start working on this? So my question is, I am very, you know, I don't feel comfortable about the price of this. I know that, you know, we are, even though people say, oh, we are paying with park fee, you know, it's not taxpayer money, you know? Yeah, but we need to be careful how we use those park fee because, you know, we, it's almost a double we're getting now for this eight pickleball court. I don't have anything where people playing that. I know that is very popular. I asked the question, how many people are playing in Fitchburg? That is, we need eight pickleball court. Can we start with four and then we another one? You know, my concern is the optical about that. We are in the middle of a pandemic. You know, the mayor are telling us that we need to be careful with our conservative with the budget. And then voila, we have this expenditure for $602,000 for pickleball balls. You know, so my question is, we need to be consistent with the message and then we need to be careful when we prepare this bid because something is not working. Is one thing that is, okay, yeah, I, I can accept the construction cost can go up. I, I cannot, I take that, but then I cannot take that now I am, I need to approve a project that it involve more than it was budgeted. That's it, that's all.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Shannon?
Yeah, and that was some, I had a couple of questions that were raised. Like Julia said, we have to be, you know, because of our parks and things like that, we have to be a little bit more mindful. And I know in McKee Farms, we're having a hard time fixing their tennis courts. So I, for me, I, and I'm not against the pickleball courts, but it just seems to me that, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty expensive when we have some other costs that could help some of our other parks that need it. That's it.
And if I could, if I could just respond to that, Shannon? For the, for new construction, for new amenities, we're able to use these park improvement fees and fee in lieu of parkland dedication. But for McKee Farms Park, that's going to be some repairs. So that does need to come out of the operating budget. We're not able to use these park improvement fees or fee in lieu of parkland dedication for, for that maintenance-type project.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
And they also have to be used in the community parks as well. You can't use them in neighborhood or area parks, those funds. I can speak to the eight courts as well. So the idea is much like tennis has that eight-court system at McKee Park, the idea was to make McGaw Park kind of the place to go for pickleball in Fitchburg. And unlike tennis, to not put courts everywhere else throughout the city, to really consolidate those courts into one top-notch facility that a lot of people can come and play at. I know that in the winter, they do have a court over at the senior center that people play at. And people will wait for 45 minutes or more to play one game and then have to sit again because it's, there's so many people that play. I know that down in Oregon, in the winter, they have on Sunday mornings, six courts at the high school in the mornings. And they have not only those six courts full, but people waiting to play for three hours, the three-hour block that they have. I've gone to Garner Park in Madison, which has six courts. And they're playing all morning long, again, people waiting the entire time. So I think that there's no doubt that, you know, four courts, six courts, there's, there's plenty of room for eight. I believe Middleton was one of the more recent cities that added courts, they added eight. And so that's kind of been the more common standard at this point in time. Gabriella?
So I, I appreciate if you could give me some history, Erin, about how this project came about? Because obviously, you, you just gave the rationale for eight courts. But my understanding is this was added to the CP last year, CIP last year at your request. And I was just like, in general, could you give me a little bit of history about how this came about?
Yep, it was added and approved in last year's. And it, we can call it because, I know how popular the senior center is to be used year-round. Well, not right now, obviously, but they actually even would play in the summer. I know that, as you've heard, there's over 500 people in the area Pickleball Association, knowing that it's a very fast-growing sport throughout the country, especially here. People play throughout the area year-round. And so knowing that it's an amenity that we don't have here in Fitchburg, I knew that it would be something very popular. McGaw Park is kind of meant to be, have a lot of the recreation opportunities out there. And with the added space that with the addition to Fahy Fields made a lot of sense. We can't put every amenity at McKee Park. It's a great park, love it. But we need to have some amenities at other parks as well. So just knowing the popularity, the growth, and the people who play already in Fitchburg, knowing that it would be a very popular thing. Yep, go ahead.
Did you consider any other uses for the park money to add to the budget? So for example, I mean, I've, I've heard that there's a proposal for an accessible playground that still needs funding. And obviously, there's the hub. And I was just wondering if there was other park projects that you considered as other valid candidates for this park funding?
Those are all great projects. We continue to get more money into that account. And so those are all projects that, as we, we continue to get more money added in there. And I know that I believe there is enough for everything we know coming through for the hub phase one at least. So there's a lot of other projects. There's a lot of projects throughout the city.
So you feel confident that we'll be able to fund the accessible playground and the hub phase one?
I don't know about the accessible playground, but I know that there's additional money. Go ahead, Scott.
I can, I can chime in there, Mayor. That $130,000 that is approved for the inclusive playground is, is factored into the, into the current parkland dedication dollars. So that, that $130,000 is already included in the, in the budget.
Oh, so we have some money already set aside for the inclusive playground?
Yep, set aside, yep.
Great.
And what we need to do is we need, in order to make that project, we have to get donations for $130,000 to match that 130.
All right. Anything else? Yep, go ahead, Gabriella.
I saw, I was curious about, I, I was taking a look at the, the old CIP where this project was originally in there. And I saw that, you know, the funding source was park improvement dedication fees. But specifically, like I know there are different designations for park improvement fees. And so Scott, maybe you can give me some insight. So that 320, so let me rephrase this. So there's a $320,000 in the CIP. There's $195,000 or so from Fahy Fields dedication fees that was added to that to fill out this project. And then $87,000 in unencumbered park fees. So that could be theoretically used anywhere in the city, but that is being dedicated to this project to like fill it out and make sure it's done completely. So I guess my question is, those $320,000, the original CIP dollars, what, what area of the park fees is that coming from?
I can, I can answer that. We, we have, by memory, we have about $810,000 currently in our, our fee in lieu of parkland dedication account. I take that back. We have $890,000, 846. And of that 890, there's a 320 for McGaw Pickleball. Waterline extension, there was 75. The inclusive playground, which I spoke of, is 130. We have splash pad changing room for 42, parking lot for 15, and then Nine Springs Golf Course improvements for 50, 51. So of that 890,000 in that account, there's 633 accounted for, which gives us that unencumbered of 257. So that's where I'm, I'm gathering unencumbered dollars to complete this project. And we have a total of $265,000 in fee in lieu of our, our park improvement fees for, for Fahy Fields.
So to clarify, so that it's $320,000 for the unencumbered fees plus the $87,000 additional unencumbered park fees, or is that a different?
No, they're, at the start of the year, we had $890,000 in that fee of parkland dedication account. And of that, we have $633,000, which is encumbered, which is already accounted for, which is the pickleball courts, which I just listed, 320 for the pickleball, 75 for the McGaw water, 130 for the inclusive playground, 42 for the changing rooms at the splash pad. And when, when you take all of that, which is already accounted for, there's 257 of that 890 that's unencumbered, that's not specifically identified for a project. And we can use those dollars in community parks. So McKee, McGaw, Nine Springs, and Sunnyside, those are the locations that we can use those dollars from. The park improvement fees are specifically for that development. So with the Fahy Fields project, we had $25,000 in park improvement fees. So those are the sources of the dollars to, to fund the project.
Okay, so I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of eight, out of the 890 for parkland and land dedication, we have like almost, close to 50% of that is being dedicated to this pickleball court project?
Uh, 320 of it is?
Plus the $87,000 or?
What's that?
Plus the $87,000 additional that's added to the project to fill it out?
That's, that's going to come out of the unencumbered.
Okay.
That comes out of the, the balance that we still have within that fee in lieu of parkland dedication.
But it's still that, out of that 890,000?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I mean, is that the 890,000 out of that, we're dedicating about 46% of that total amount to the pickleball court project.
That could be, with the, with the understanding that Fahy Fields, they may have contributed, you know, that 55% of the funds to the, you know, to that account, to that fund. Because they were deficient in 12 or 13 acres times 65,000, you know, what, what's 12 times 65,000? That's how much they contributed to that, to that parkland dedication fund, fee in lieu of parkland.
And then I guess I have one follow, so you said that there's future plan for athletic fields in the same area?
Well, there, if, if you're familiar, there's, it's kind of plateaued. There's a middle section, which we're talking about now, but then there's a north section. And then also a southern section. And those are identified as open play athletic fields. So they're just basically going to be grass, but they're going to be available for soccer and, and lacrosse and flag football.
That doesn't require any additional money?
It, it shouldn't, no. No, we might, while we might do some support, you know, some bleachers or, or those kinds of things. And actually, with this project, we are including a path that's going to be connected to both the north and the south. So people are going to be able to walk to each of those areas from the parking lot in the, in the middle. So it, it does, you know, it is, it's kind of the pickleball project, but there are other amenities that are going to be a benefit to the whole entire development of the park.
Okay.
If I remember, Scott, probably reasoning for the parking lot is not just for pickleball, but because of those two athletic fields and the lacrosse, the ultimate frisbee, the flag football, all those types of things that are gonna, you know, two extra fields is gonna bring a lot more people to that park.
No, absolutely. And, and we, you know, we, we want to try and keep parking out of the Fahy Fields development for the use of these fields. So when we have these kinds of fields, we really should have the parking facility within the, within the park itself.
All right, Julia?
Yes, I don't know. My fellow elder read a letter from Kappa. And one of the paragraphs says that it says, it's probably more important to have side fences and wind screens than eight court. So what happened when we build this eight court and people start complaining that, oh, we need a side fence or we need a wind screen? Because I don't, I don't assume that they are part of the package, the $600,000. So this is a thing that they'll change order, that we need to think, you know, about, you know, that, you know, we will need in the future and how we're going to pay for this, you know? So, so I don't know, this is why no one has responded to me or given an answer about why do we need eight? The other thing that I did, when I did a lot of research about this, is that we can convert tennis court in pickleball court. And we have two already in McGaw Park. We have two, we have four in McKee. So we have some tennis courts that we can convert to pickleball court in the meantime, you know? So I think that we need to, you know, be more resourceful with our resources. So I don't know. That's it.
Tom, go ahead.
Julia, let me help you out a little bit. We need light item veto. We need a light, line item so we know where the money's going. That's what you need. And I know we have new, two new people on Finance, but you have to help them. You need a line item. You're spending 600, I was wrong, I have no problem admitting it, over $600,000. And you're giving it to a blank, one blank check to a person. And I heard from the city administrator what he just said, that this is the way we do it. Let me tell you something. When I was first elected, this, just the way we do it caught up with us. Let me tell you something. When I was first elected, this, just the way we do it caught up with us. For the others that have been here, you remember Fish Hat, do you remember Lacy Road? From Lacy Road, from the city hall to Sine Road, it got way out of line with the expense. Way out of line. Because no one was watching it, and the fact of the matter is, I'm not sure if it was done like this. But I just don't like this idea that you give a blank check to one person, one company. And here, Julia, let me help you. Fencing, plumbing, asphalt, what about a change order? I mean, this really isn't the good way to do business out here. And I already did some checking with Madison and Sun Prairie, um, and they don't do it like this. And where I'm just not liking it is you just put it out for bid. And I, I just think we should be asking more questions on this, don't you? I kind of think Gabrielle wants to, but she's a little new too. I know Dan Barr would be all over this. But the fact is, is you just give one company a blank check for six hundred thousand? I don't care if it's five hundred and fifty thousand, whatever, and then there to do the work. But what about the change orders? What about the problems? That's going to come back to haunt us. That will haunt us. And I don't care if it's a parks, I'm looking out for the taxpayer, I'm looking out for park dedication, I'm looking out for the pickleball court, believe it or not. But nobody seems to be ready, we're just rubber stamping these big numbers. And I think it's got to stop. And if I raise it tonight, I hope others will jump on here, or at least raise a question. That's all I'm asking.
All right, Julia, go ahead.
Okay, Tom, I, I think you need to watch our finance committee meeting, because we have spent more than half an hour asking questions. So we, we, uh, the, the only thing that I didn't know there?
Did you get your answers?
Hold on, hold on, don't interrupt.
No explain in any place is the lump sum. Uh, you know, it's something that I am Google, I am learning what it is, you know? But, um, that one, it wasn't, um, even, you know, introduced to us that. I don't know how, you know, you got that information. But I will tell you, we are asking questions, this is why we are asking this question, and we are doing our due diligence. And I don't have anything against pickleball court. I have a problem with the price of the pickleball court. You know, uh, uh, you know, I like the, I, this is my question. Uh, my question is, why we don't start slow? Why we don't start with four? And we convert two of the tennis court in the Magaw Park, and then we have six? And then when, you know, after COVID and our budget improved, or we, you know, maybe we can add more, you know what I mean? But I am asking all this question to my, my fellow alder, and so far, we are only three people talking here.
All right, Gabrielle.
Um, yeah, Tom, I, I'm also very concerned about this overall cost. I, I, and Scott, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, in the finance committee meeting, you, you let us know that it's based, that six hundred thousand dollars basically breaks down to forty thousand dollars for each of the eight courts, which yields the three hundred and twenty thousand dollar number. Uh, eighty thousand dollars for the path, thirty thousand dollars for the culverts, and a hundred and twenty thousand for the thirty-four parking stalls. Is that correct?
Along with ten thousand for restoration. And then the fifty-four thousand in contingency.
Fifty-four thousand contingency. Okay, and then? Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious why the, so are there other CIP projects where the money in the CIP does not represent everything that needs to be done for the project to be completed? Because I just, I just always, I thought that the CIP projects were pretty comprehensive, like they, the money is in, in there for the project is really meant to represent everything that the project entails. And yeah, I mean, this looks like it's almost doubling of, of what was voted on at the CIP. And I just wonder if the, if the amendment had been for six hundred and four thousand, or sorry, over six hundred thousand, I, I don't know that it would have been voted, moved forward, uh, and the CIP might not have been amended last year. Um, yeah, so it just feels a little bit like a bait and switch that, that, you know, ma- maybe unintentionally. But, um, I, it also just makes me wonder what else in the CIP isn't a comprehensive cost.
Yeah, Erin, I guess I can answer that, if you don't mind.
Sure. Go ahead.
Um, the CIP is a planning document, Gabrielle, it's not a, uh, we, we work out final costs once we go through the budget process. Those final costs are brought to you guys for approval. So they're not always, well, they're never exactly correct. In this case, obviously, they're a little, they're a lot more off than we would like it. Uh, probably because some components were added, um, to the project that weren't originally thought to be needed, um, in the project. So that's where you're seeing the discrepancy, is CIP is a planning document. We try to get the best costs we know at the time. But when we get down to the hard costs and the hard cost estimates and going out for bid, that's when we really see the true costs of a project.
Okay. But do you expect that there's going to be potentially a doubling of other CIP projects when?
No, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't ever anticipate a doubling.
Yeah.
We hope that our, our estimates, our, our planning estimates are as close as possible. This is, this is an exception.
Okay.
All right, ready to vote? I don't think.
Um, I had a, I had a, just a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, I'll, I'll just say, like, given some of our conversation during the CIP process about, you know, the time we're coming into, um, and just the fact that I think several alders put amendments forth and sort of adjusted their money, their, um, project amounts, including myself, uh, for 2021, that I, I don't think that it would be a bad thing, and I don't see the danger in, or the problem in reducing the number of courts and therefore reducing the costs and, you know, maybe testing this out. Rather than just going full throttle and, and, um, you know, putting this entire amount on our, you know, given sort of the uncertainty of where things are going to go. Um, so I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
Gabrielle, go ahead.
Scott, is there a sunset clause on any of these funds for this particular project?
There, I, I defer to Misty if she was there, but there, there is a, a, a time limit in which we need to, to use the funds by, I believe it's six or seven years. That's correct.
Hey, Misty's here. All right, Misty, do you want to speak to that?
I am here. So the, uh, the newer fees after the law was changed, there's a sunset clause of seven years that can be extended by council resolution for ten years. So the recent Fahy Fields, um, fees would be subject to that. That unencumbered amount that we've been talking about, and even the three-twenty is under the old way. So there isn't currently a sunset period on those fees.
All right, I've got, oh, do you have another? Are you still going?
Sorry, if we don't pass this today, those funds aren't going to disappear next year, just to clarify.
The funds will not disappear, no.
Okay.
All right, I have Sarah and then Dorothy after that. Go ahead, Sarah.
Sure, and I guess this is where, Scott, just can you offer, and I apologize just for some clarification, but for the additional amenities, I mean, some of these funds are, the intention was for them to be directed to the Fahy Fields Magaw Extension as part of those fees from the Fahy Fields development, correct? So I mean, just, just so there's some clarification that, I mean, for the eight pickleball courts, one, we had some research that it is a, a sport that's being in high demand. And so I think that for there being eight courts, there's a level of interest that people are interested in playing the sport. Two, we do have some efficiencies gained, where if we know the courts are going to be used, I do think we save money by having just efficiencies from construction with having them all put in place at one time. And if they're going to be used, I think that is favorable for us financially long term. And then three, I guess, just Scott, if you don't mind speaking to that specifically as to that, these fees and their intention of being directed towards that Fahy Fields development?
That, that is correct, Sarah, and I, I tried to explain that to, when I, when Gabriella asked the question that the fees that we've collected from Fahy Fields, whether it be fee in lieu of parkland dedication, along with the park improvement fees, those are fees that we're using for the development of this, of this area. And that, you know, we, we definitely want to, certainly we can use fee in lieu of parkland dedication for community parks, which what we're potentially doing at, at Nine Springs with the hub. But we really want to try and, and utilize those fees that we collect from the development for the development of their park. Uh, because at the end of the day, their, their customers, their residents are, are paying those fees. So it, it, it's really only fair that we spend those dollars in their park. And, and as I said, if, you know, twelve thousand times sixty-five, or, you know, sixty-five thousand times twelve, that's the amount of fee in lieu of parkland dedication that they paid, along with the two hundred and, what is that, two hundred and sixty-five thousand of park improvement fees? So you add those two together, uh, you know, I don't know, what is, what is sixty-five thousand times twelve? No, I'm just saying that the, the monies that we're using for this development come from that development.
All right, um, I, before Dorothy, I go to you, I, I just had a, uh, some person, a resident, just register in opposition. And just a comment of when the city built the very small park, i.e. tat lot with one plaything for small kids and one, not two basketball hoops, they spent very minimal money and this park is not adequate to meet the needs of that area. Spend six hundred and two thousand dollars on the King James area or west of Verona, please. That was from Regina Ryan in Pittsburgh. All right, uh, Dorothy, go ahead.
Yeah, mine is going to pretty much echo what she just said in her comment. One question is, we're talking about an association that wants apparently to set up, um, contests or whatever they call them, um, with groups of people, um, which is probably fine as long as Pittsburgh gets the ability to get good use out of things. Um, hopefully, it wouldn't be people that are coming in from other areas. Um, but then my other point is, if pickleball is getting to be such a popular sport instead of concentrating it in one place in the city, how come we're not talking about spreading it out like we do for basketball courts and things? Um, I'm going to bet that a lot of people in the Belmar area would love to, uh, play pickleball in the neighborhood. And they're not going to have that opportunity. Uh, Jamestown is certainly big enough to put pickleball courts. Um, so I guess I'm kind of irritated that, again, the east side of the city gets it and the north side, um, is left without.
You know, and just for, for clarification, there are, there are rules in, in which we can use these fees in lieu of parkland dedication, and then there's rules in which we can use, uh, park improvement fees. And, and, you know, at the end of the day, that, those are the rules that we got to follow, you know, follow and, and fund these projects. So I, that's, that's just the, the hand that we're dealt, I guess, Dorothy.
And I think much like you see with tennis courts, you know, these courts are built like tennis courts and they're extremely expensive. And the maintenance of our tennis courts throughout the city is very difficult to do because it's so expensive, and that's the idea of consolidating into the one of the, uh, one park. And so that, again, like Sarah said, there's efficiencies in building, but then there's, there's also efficiencies in upkeep, um, further down the line versus two courts here, two courts there. Um, you know, I think a tennis court was a hundred and sixty thousand or a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to resurface. And so, and that's something that we took out of the CIP for all the tennis courts except for McKee, because it's so expensive to maintain those throughout the city and just having one kind of featured spot to play, which would be tennis for, in McKee, and then the idea is pickleball here in Magaw. So, Julia, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, what is the life of the courts? For how long, you know, when is it going to be our first maintenance? You know what I mean? Because I assume that they're going to be expensive like a tennis court.
Same as tennis. I don't know what we have for tennis, Misty, do you know off the top of your head?
It's like ten years, fifteen years? What is the life?
It's at least ten, I think, I don't know exactly, off the top of my head. All right, ready to vote?
Roll call.
Yep. Uh, Tracy, if you can do a roll call, that'd be great.
Sorry. Uh, Alder Radifrata? No. Alder Clutter?
No.
Alder Crowsey?
No.
Alder Gerhart?
No.
Alder Maldonado? Alder Schroeder?
Yes.
Alder Strassman?
No.
Alder Udell?
No.
All right, failed, so moving along. Uh, Public Works, Sarah, you want to do the next one?
Yes, so I'd make a motion to approve Resolution R. 15720, approving the First Amendment to the Agreement for Subdivision Improvements in the Platte Fahy Fields.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right, what's this about?
Um, it's a standard agreement. I know Bill can probably speak most to it, but it is kind of changing water mains from twelve inches to ten inches. And it was just, uh, regarding installation of the public improvements, it was pretty standard, a resolution. But Bill, I don't know if you do want to speak to it more, Pat, I apologize.
And before you, um, I get to you guys, I did have David Fahy emailed and said he is in favor of this and hopes that it passes. So I did have that one citizen comment. Uh, Bill or Pat, do you want to speak to it anymore?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, uh, it's an amendment to the original agreement for Fahy Fields, for the Fahy Fields plat, and, um, is to include a provision that would allow the city to reimburse the developer or the developer for the cost of oversizing water main in the development. Uh, we typically would have the developers install at cost a ten-inch water main, but because the city would need a twelve-inch water main in the location to serve future development, uh, we would reimburse the developer for that cost. We do have in the CIP a, um, a project that, for the oversight, cover the cost of the oversizing of these water mains and sanitary sewers for developments. And, uh, the, the agreement, the amendment to the agreement also includes, uh, a stipulation for, uh, compliance with the new statutes for development as far as acceptance in building permits and, uh, the completion of the project. So we're just bringing, uh, the, the previous agreement into, uh, into term with the, the current standards and the water main, uh, oversize for this amendment.
All right, any questions or comments at all? I can't see the screen. Okay, uh, it looks like no one. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. Anything else, Sarah?
Well, nothing else.
All right, how about Parks Commission?
We met on nine-three, and we did have a good discussion on the upcoming Stoner Prairie Crescent Road Park proposal. Otherwise, nothing to report. Our next meeting is October first.
All right, Library Board.
Uh, we have not met, um, the next meeting though is, uh, Wednesday, September sixteenth. But I do have some updates. Uh, the hours for the same, same-day curbside pickup on, of holds has expanded. Uh, that is for the call, for calling in and for picking up, those hours have expanded. Uh, I've got a, I've got the hours, but I think it's just best if you went online to, uh, if you're looking for, for the new hours. Uh, Fall Reading Challenge, uh, the first, uh, Fall Reading Program will run from September first through November thirtieth. Uh, the library, uh, has program for all ages, from pre-readers to adults. Uh, the library, uh, has program for all ages, from pre-readers to adults. For those that do not have a library, a card, you can now apply online. Kindles and Ruko's, uh, are available for checkout through the curbside. That's new grab bags. Uh, submit an online form to request a grab bag for kids and adults. And, uh, the library is now offering, uh, printing, uh, through the, uh, curbside service. So there's just a few updates. For specifics, just, uh, uh, go to the, uh, uh, library website. Thank you.
All right, Commission Agent Well, Dorothy? Oh, we can't hear you, Dorothy. You're on mute.
I clicked it.
All right.
Uh, we ended up having to cancel the September meeting that we'd been looking forward to. Uh, we were anticipating meeting in October then.
All right, RCC, Gabriella?
Next meeting is on September twenty-fourth.
All right, what about Transportation and Transit?
Uh, we are still deciding on our next meeting.
All right, Seda, Julia?
Uh, we are meeting, uh, September fourteen, a combined meeting with, um, the Housing Committee.
All right, Agribusiness, Randy?
Uh, next meeting is September twenty-second.
All right, EMS, Shannon?
Um, I don't have anything yet.
All right.
No, no official date.
All right, uh, Bike Committee, Joe?
Um, meet me at the border is this Friday. Um, it's going to be leaving from, um, the...
Subsea.
What's that?
Subsea of Portland.
Yes, Subzero, um, this Friday at seven P M.
All right, I will be there. Hopefully you will, other people too.
Just jump in. At Race Day Events, new building.
Okay.
Is the starting point on Subzero Parkway.
All right.
Thanks, Steve.
Excellent. Uh, Tree Advisory, Gabriella?
We meet on Thursday.
All right, Landmark Preservation, Shannon?
Um, nothing to report.
All right, Census Complete Committee, Dorothy?
We got a whole, a whole bunch going on. There's the very last day. Oh, I must have not gotten it off my printer. Oh, well. Um, the, this, this is the last month that they're going to be doing it. So again, there's urgency to, um, helping to make sure that people in all of our districts end up being counted. Otherwise, we don't get as much money from federal and state programs as we would if everyone was counted. Uh, schools get especially hard hit. If we don't get the kids counted, particularly in the northern end of, of the districts, we're going to have less money available for our school kids. So we really, 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 really need all of us to get out and help encourage, particularly apartment owners, to work with census workers to allow them into their buildings to knock on doors.
All right, what about Housing Advisory, Dorothy?
Uh, me some more again. Uh, we will be meeting in nine fourteen at five o'clock.
All right, and what about Healthy Neighborhoods?
Uh, and that is nothing since our July meeting.
All right, thank you. Uh, Julia, Finance?
Aaron, can we move item, um, uh, B, five and six to the top? Because there are a lot of people, uh, that want to speak and this is at the end of the meeting.
I think, well, except for hazard pay, I think everything is going to go pretty quick. And I'd like to buzz through those because we have to get, we need to get those things done. And it's going to be a long time before we get through the other stuff. So if we could, um, I can move hazard pay back, but we can buzz through these other things before that, that'd be great.
Yeah, definitely move hazard pay back.
Okay.
Okay, so, so in the Finance Committee meeting, we approve, uh, the deals and the detailed review of all check issued, check number one-two-one-one-two-six dash one-two-one-one-six-eight dated August sixteen to August thirty-first, twenty-twenty, totally three million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars with thirty cents. We also review the detailed ACH payment dated August twenty, totally two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars with seventeen cents. And then, um, uh, I, um, I need a motion to approve Resolution R dash one-four-nine dash twenty, authorization for the twenty-twenty Danecom operating and maintenance cost.
Is there a second?
Could move, move it if you need that. Otherwise, I'll second it.
All right, same about Dorothy. All right, what's this, Julia?
So we have, uh, the chief here, uh, from the fire department, that he will, uh, explain this.
All right, go ahead, Joe.
So this is a reoccurring, uh, annual expense for our radio equipment. Danecom supplies our, uh, our ability to communicate with, uh, police, fire, EMS, Public Works. So, uh, Pittsburgh Fire Police, Fitrona EMS, and then our, uh, Street Department all use this system. So the, uh, the expense that you're seeing is an ongoing expense. And, uh, typically goes up a little bit every year to address the, the maintenance of that system.
All right, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that's approved. All right, Julia, want to do the next one?
Yes, and the next is similar. Uh, I need approval of Resolution R dash one-five-zero dash twenty, authorization for the twenty-twenty Danecom Fitchwood Enhancement Payment.
Second.
Same by Gabriella. All right, Joe, what's this one?
So, uh, back when the, uh, system was put in, uh, the, the chief at the time, uh, did an assessment of, of our, uh, our ability to communicate in different parts of our city, found a couple of dead spots. So, uh, what, uh, he needed to do was to, uh, uh, put in a place, some equipment that would allow us to, uh, to, to communicate, uh, without any issues. So that is an, an additional expense that Pittsburgh sees every year on top of the amount that we, uh, we are charged for the typical Danecom system. Um, we are in the process of, uh, trying to identify exactly what this expense looks like going forward. But, uh, that takes some coordination between Dane County and us. And, um, hopefully we'll have more information moving forward.
All right, any questions on this one? I don't think so. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, anything else, Julia, for Finance?
No.
All right, we will push back the hazard pay resolution to the end of the agenda. Sarah, anything on Public Safety?
How about the rest of personnel?
Oh, sorry, yeah, we can do that. Sorry, yeah, go ahead, Dorothy, if you have anything else.
Uh, we're going to be meeting tomorrow at five o'clock. Um, couple of interesting things on the agenda that people might want to pay attention to. I know it'll be coming before others as well. Um, Police Department Policy Manual update. Um, and that will include, and we, we've already authorized payment for this, I believe, um, that will also include, um, training, da- daily training information. So it, it's going to be real reflective of how we want our police department to operate. And in these times, it's a good thing to keep an eye on, uh, what those things look like. We'll also be talking about an employee handbook update as well.
All right, good. Uh, Sarah, anything in Public Safety?
Nothing to report.
All right, let's push Mayor Eldridge reports the end of the agenda as well then. And go down, no unfinished business, uh, new business. Tracy, what's the latest on the twenty-twenty elections?
Okay, so I've got a lot to go over tonight. I'll try to make it quick. Um, so Wisconsin Elections Commission mailed out an informational mailer on September first to all the registered voters in the state that did not have an absentee request on file for the November election at the end of June. This mailer included options on how voters can cast a ballot for the November election. It also includes information on requesting a ballot through the MyVote website, as well as an actual absentee ballot application. Clerks around, um, Dane County have received numerous calls and emails for voters who have already requested an absentee ballot, asking if they still need to fill out the form and return it. If you have an absentee ballot request on file since the end of June, there's no need to do anything. Please use the mailer as information to check the status of your request. I also wanted to make everyone aware of the Dane County Voter ID Coalition Hotline Number. That number is six oh eight, two eight five, two one four one. You will be instructed to leave your name, phone number, and the municipality in which you live, and they will return your call within twenty-four hours. Some of the things they can assist with are serve as a witness for your absentee ballot. Someone will actually come out to your residence, give you a ride to your polling location on election day, give you a ride to drop off your absentee ballot to our office prior to election day, assist with voter registration processes, and make sure you have your form filled out and, filled out correctly and have a valid proof of residency. Uh, we also have two dates available at a couple of our city parks for absentee ballot drop-off. Those days and locations are McKee Farms Park Shelter, Saturday, October twenty-fourth, from ten A M. to one P M. And the Hugo Jamestown Shelter, October seventeenth, from ten A M. to one P M. Uh, we'll be accepting absentee ballots for all the surrounding municipalities, and we'll make sure those ballots get to the proper clerk's office well in advance of election day. Madison is doing similar things around the city parks here in Pittsburgh and Madison on other dates and times, and we'll be providing the same service for, for surrounding municipalities as well. Uh, just to kind of give you some numbers, I know everybody likes numbers. As of today, we have seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty-six registered voters. Uh, I've got numbers registered by district. Uh, District One has two thousand, nine hundred and thirteen. District Two has four thousand, nine hundred and six. District Three has four thousand, four hundred and sixteen. District Four has five thousand, one hundred and twenty-one. We have seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine absentee ballot requests on file. And by district, uh, District One has one thousand, ninety-seven. District Two has two thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight. District Three has one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine. And District Four has two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five. Uh, ballots are being delivered to the city clerk's office at the end of this week, and we will begin mailing out these requests the following Monday. By law, we are required to have all the requests that are currently on file out no later than September seventeenth. And I am working to find additional help, um, in making this task happen. That's it.
All right, any questions on the other? Hold on, you got, raise your hand. I know Zoom's a pain in the butt. All right, go ahead, Gabriella. And then Julia, after that. Go ahead, Gabriella.
I'm sorry, I thought we were moving on. Sorry, I just wanted to repeat the, the voter number a couple of times and also the, the drop-off dates and locations, just one more time for both of those.
Yep, you bet. McKee Farms Park Shelter, Saturday, October twenty-fourth, from ten A M. to one P M. Hugo Jamestown Shelter, October seventeenth, from ten A M. to one P M. Um, and then, did you want, are you looking for registered voters or absentees or all?
Oh, the, no, the, um, the voter helpline, the Dane County voter hotline?
That number is six oh eight, two eight five, two one four one. And again, you'll be instructed to leave your name, your phone number, and the municipality in which you live, and they will return your call within twenty-four hours. Thank you.
All right, Julia, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, so thank you, Tracy, for organizing the activity in the park. I think that we, we discussed about this over the phone. Uh, it's great that we are doing this. And my question to you is, uh, how you're going to promote this so people know how to, that we are going to be doing this in the park?
Yep, so there's, um, three ways that I'm working on promoting it as of now. We're going to put it on our website. Uh, I reached out to our Fact TV Department to do a segment on that as well. And then we are also going to be promoting it on all of our social media platforms. There was discussion about a, um, flu, flu shot at, at the senior center is doing. Um, I thought about putting signs there so people can, are aware of that.
Uh, how about the Fitchwood start and other, you know what I mean, like?
Yep, yep, I can reach out to, to Kimberly and, but I think she's actually in the audience tonight.
She is.
Great.
Yeah, because the Fitchwood start have two, you know, the September one, I don't know if they're already out. The October, um, you know, edition, at least we need to have this information there because otherwise, you know, and I think you can provide us information to others in a, in a script format. We can, you know, uh, send it to our list of people.
Yep, wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see anything else, so we can move along to, uh, direct referrals. Uh, looks like Public Works maybe, Sarah, do you want to do this one?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve Resolution R one thirty-three twenty, approving copy agreement lease with Rico for third floor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance?
Yes.
Yes, all right, what is it, Sarah?
The lease expired for the printer. Um, and so they're looking to just have a printer still available. Uh, they still do use it a lot and just feel a need for it.
All right, any questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. All right, next one, Sarah?
Make a motion to approve Resolution R one sixty twenty, approving the agreement for subdivision improvements in the platte of the first edition of Taravessa.
Second.
Second.
Same by Dorothy, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
Yes, all right, what's this one?
Uh, this is a standard agreement, just that the land division requires us to come back. I don't really have any more specifics, just that it is pretty standard. When the building gets to a certain point, I don't know if Bill wants to add in any specifics.
Anything you want to add, Bill? I know that the first phase was very popular and going well.
Um, yeah, this is our, our standard agreement, uh, for a developer to follow, to, uh, install the improvements for the development. Uh, the roads, the sewer, water, stormwater paths and everything. And, uh, it's our standard agreement, uh, for approval.
All right, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. Uh, looks like Finance would be this next one. Julia, do you want to do the motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution R dash one-six-seven dash twenty, approval of Tri-North change order as part of Station One remodel, uh, project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Same by Randy, uh, do you want to speak to that or you want Chief to speak to that?
Oh, I want the chief to speak, yeah.
All right, go ahead, Joe.
Well, as part of the, uh, the Station One remodel project, uh, Tri-North was our construction manager. Uh, they worked on a couple of things to, uh, help us keep our costs down, but that, uh, also incurred a, a change order. The change order was, uh, less than twenty-five hundred dollars. Typically, that's something that I can approve. But, uh, it brought our overall expense of, uh, of this project with Tri-North just over the twenty-five thousand dollar mark, which means that it has to come before the council and, and get approved. So, um, a little bit of overview that was shared at the Finance Committee. Um, there is still money left in this project. One of the things that we tried to do, and one of the reasons why we brought Tri-North on board was to control some of the expense. We do have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the remodel project for Station One. We are still well under five hundred thousand. There are projects that have yet to be done here at the fire station, but we're prioritizing projects, so we do not go over budget. And so we're taking that incrementally. So, uh, yeah, the, the, and, the intent here was to control costs, and that's why Tri-North was brought on board.
All right, any questions at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that's approved. And one more, Julia?
Yeah, I'm going to give it to Gabriella because she amended.
All right.
Uh, I move approval of Resolution R one sixty-nine twenty, resolution amending the terms of payment required for letters of credit as amended by the Finance Committee.
Okay, is there a second? Same by Randy, and then Gabriella, maybe you want to speak to it and what the amendment is?
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, maybe. Bill, are you still here? Can you talk about the general, and then I can mention what the amendment would be?
Yeah, we have a standard template for letters of credit that developers provide to, as like an insurance policy, that in case something were to go wrong, that we would have that the funds available to complete the construction for the development. The terms, the standard terms that we have require that upon presentation of a letter from the city, the bank will turn over the funds requested for the letter of credit. And during this most recent development, we had a request from one of the banks to, due to COVID and operational issues within the bank, that they would like a little more leniency toward how fast they have to provide the funds to the city. And they had requested, you know, three business days in order to to provide those funds to the city upon notice. So the city attorney and the Finance Department had looked at that, and we really don't see any issues with this one development. We just want to try to be consistent for all developments so that this is possibly just a one-case situation.
And the amendment from the Finance Committee was to limit this change to the Fahy Fields development and not have it be a change for all of these agreements moving forward.
Do you want to speak to why?
Yeah, I think the reason why is just, Misty doesn't anticipate a lot of problems, but there is a potential situation where there would be a problem. And since this process has been pretty standard in the past, we'd rather keep the change to the development where it was requested so as not to change the precedent for going forward.
All right, anyone else? Sarah, go ahead.
And just to double check, the city attorney was okay with this? Being changed just for the one development, that that was okay and didn't cause any red flags from the...
I, Valerie was not on the Finance Committee call. We talked about it with Bill and Misty.
Pat, I saw you pop up. Do you want to, or Bill, or Misty, I see you all popping up now. Someone want to address it?
Yeah, the city attorney and I had consulted with the bank prior to bringing this forward. So the city attorney is comfortable with this language as well.
Misty or Pat, do you want to add anything?
Oh, I was going to say the same thing.
All right, any further questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor of approving as amended by Finance, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, that is approved. All right, now to five and six, they're kind of the same thing, a little different, but I don't know if you're going to just table one indefinitely or speak to them both. I think the first one was Dorothy's. I don't know, Dorothy, if you want to, what you want to do with this one?
I think let's hold off on that and see what happens with the number six. Probably in the end, we'll end up voting to say no on five. But let's wait and see what happens with six first.
All right, so skip ahead to six then. All right, Joe, I know it's your resolution. Do you want to make the motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 170-20.
And then can you read the whole line?
Yes, combining or creation of two polling places. I don't know if I have the exact report.
No, change of District one polling location and split it to two locations.
Change of District polling location, one creation of two locations.
All right, is there a second? Second by Dorothy. Let's see, I think I'll have you speak to this quick, Joel, and then I'll have staff comment, and then we got a bunch of citizen comments from there.
Sure, absolutely. So this resolution was in response to the one Dorothy had just mentioned. You know, as you know, this district has, you know, the highest concentration of residents living in poverty. It's also got a high number of residents that lack access to reliable transportation. Our current site in the Marketplace Firehouse is outside of our district. And it's also outside of reliable transportation methods. It's not on a bus line. It's, you know, a 40 minutes up to an hour walk from many places in the district. And we are, the heart of this resolution is to look for creative ways to be able to ensure that residents, particularly in our population center in District one, have access to walkable voting. It came to my attention and as well as the council's attention about three or four hours ago that there are barriers to be, to splitting the district into two, unfortunately. However, I wanted to still give the public the opportunity to be able to, you know, weigh in as many people prepared comments well before we found this news. I think this is an equity issue. This is a social justice issue, and it's also an issue of access to democracy, one of our most important rights as U.S. citizens. I, you know, have ideas. I'd like to, you know, have, let this be a discussion among the council of possibilities, but I think the long-term solution is that we really need two polling places in District one. We've talked about it in our June meeting. We've obviously been talking about it long before that. But it's really important, just given the structural barriers to walkability and to transportation, that we ensure that we have neighborhood-based polling sites. This resolution would ultimately do two things. It would, one, create a space in the King James neighborhood that would allow for residents west of Verona Road to be able to, you know, walk to a polling site. It would also allow residents in the eastern half of District one in the Dunsmarsh neighborhood to do the same. It leverages partnerships with key stakeholders, including the City of Madison, the federal government through the CARES Act, the League of Women Voters, as well as two well-respected nonprofits in our community that serve our residents. I want to express sincere gratitude to the last I counted, over 30 people who have registered in support, as well as folks that are on this call today, especially to the folks that have been waiting a very long time to speak and are probably very tired. I appreciate you. I appreciate your advocacy. I appreciate your service. And I appreciate your concern for your fellow constituents. I also want to express gratitude to anybody who's offered to volunteer in any type of way during this election. You are really the reason why democracy exists and why democracy remains strong despite all the obstacles and barriers. The details of this resolution essentially is that one polling place would be shared with the City of Madison. It would be at the Boys and Girls Club of Dane County. We've talked about clear mechanisms to be able to separate out residents from one city to another that all live in the neighborhood, but ultimately would serve that entire neighborhood. The Redeemer City Church was established earlier this year and have graciously, from the start, offered to be a polling site. And despite some of the logistics related to spacing out polling stations, spacing out voting machines, that the ability to serve half of the district rather than the whole would mitigate some, would mitigate those issues because you would need less people as well as less equipment. And then finally, the amount of volunteers that have reached out to me and other alders over the past week has been phenomenal. There are a lot of folks who are willing and able to give their time to ensure that this is a safe process and, you know, ensure that there are not health-related concerns and also make sure there are not other, you know, hazard-related concerns. Again, the county clerk, you know, informed us that we would not be able to split up a polling site, but I felt it's important to state publicly that we did all that we could to make this work through every challenge possible. We found ways to be able to make this a doable solution. And I just reiterate my commitment to making sure that in the future we have multiple sites and more polling locations for our residents, particularly the residents who need it the most. And with that, I'll leave it to staff.
All right, Tracy, I know we got a lot of information, or you got a lot of information today. And so do you want to just share that before the public speaks? Just so I want to make sure that they know some of the things that we found out.
Yes, I did do some research, and I talked to the county. And, you know, basically, our polling locations are based, they're considered reporting units. You can't separate out a reporting unit. Statutorily, to change a polling location, you can do that prior to, 30 days prior to the election, but actually splitting a reporting unit, that is something that needs to be worked out logistically, you know, months in advance, because that's how things are reported into the WISBO program. That determines the way the ballot styles are coded, not only for us but for the county. So, yeah, there was a lot of, a lot of logistics with the timing of that that just didn't work out for the November election.
All right, anything else before I go to citizen comments?
Mayor, I just asked, I checked in with a couple of people that are online. Can we actually move up Dave Heidey first? I just, I sort of asked him to weigh in really last minute, and I, it didn't take, it took a little bit longer than I expected.
Sure, Dave, go ahead.
Hey, guys, how you doing? A lot of familiar faces. I'm not even wearing my hat. That's how late it is. I just wanted to say I'm 100% in favor. For those of you who don't know, I guess maybe there was a little bit of talk about it before, but we're opening up, Little Johns has finally gotten a securing on a lease over in the E1 Furniture Building. So we're super pumped and excited to start being able to help out with food insecurity throughout Pittsburgh. More than anything, I'm really pumped and excited that we get to do it in Pittsburgh. We've been looking at Madison, both North Side, downtown. We've been looking at Sun Prairie and Middleton. And this has always been my home, and we're really happy to kind of center it there. We are not only in favor of this proposal, but we are also more than willing, it may not happen for this election, but we're more than willing, we've got a, it's a 28,000 square foot space, and we're more than happy to use our site as a polling site as well. There's a huge, huge area that's going to be blocked off for public and community space going forward. So we're happy to use it. We're right in that district. We're right across from the Fountain Apartments, and we're more than happy to use our space. Of course, pending board approval, unlike my restaurants where I can just be the all-saying, all-knowing Dave. I have drawn up by a board, which I guess you guys all know about. Look at this. This is nuts. I've never heard people talk about pickleball that much in my whole life, but it's cool. So you guys know. So I just have to get some approvals from my board. But one of my board members is Sarah Finger, who founded the Wisconsin Alliance for Women's Health, which is a huge voting advocacy group in Madison. And I know should 100% be in favor of that as well. Our whole mission with Little Johns is obviously to help out those who need help, whether it's for us, it's for food insecurity and for job training and whatnot, and getting access for people really in need. And, you know, voting is one of the most key essential things that people can be a part of. And so we'd be happy to help sponsor in any way we can.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of people here in the council chambers I'm going to go to next. First is Joe Jensen, if you'd like to come up to one of the mics.
Hi, thank you, everybody, for giving me the time to speak on this. I apologize for my appearance. Came here right from the gym. I just wanted to thank Joe for sending me the email to tell me about this issue. It's something I feel passionately about. I believe even in a normal year, making it easy for people to vote is one of the most important things we can do. Our democracy is better when everybody's voice can be heard. I know several years ago now, when they moved our polling place from my neighborhood, and I live on Schaefer Drive, right behind the Speedway, off of Verona Road there. And when our polling place was moved from the old fire station to twice as far away, that was a frustration for me. Now, this isn't, I mean, this isn't for me, though, because anybody who's willing to give up a Tuesday evening after a long day of work and the first day of virtual school, where we hopefully don't kill our kids, to come down and talk about this issue was going to find a way to vote no matter what. This is for the people who don't have flexible schedules or access to transportation like I do to be able to make their voice heard. And I think that's very important for us to be able to do. And like I said, that's in a normal year. This is not a normal year. This year, we have a global pandemic, which has killed, what, 180,000 plus Americans and counting already? And it is made worse by forcing people to be in close contact with each other, including waiting in long lines to vote, potentially, you know, gathering in an area. If we can spread that out and make it safer for people to perform their civic duty, I think it's more imperative for us to do so. Like I said, in a normal year, not doing everything we can to make it easy for people to vote would be an injustice. And this year, not doing that is, it's moral corruption. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Regina Ryan?
I'm Regina Ryan, I'm former Dane County Board Supervisor. I served with Tom Clouder. Hi, Tom. I'm in support of Resolution 170-20 because I live in the neighborhood. I'm a child of the 60s. I got a lot of history of watching black folks and white folks get beat up and hosed and all that so they could get the right to vote. I wasn't born when women first got the right to vote, but I was born when black folks got the right to vote. Got a lot of black folks that live over in District one. Got a lot of Latinx people that live over there. We got a lot of poor white people that live over there. And who in the heck moved that polling place way over there where they moved it? Short-sighted at best. One lady says, oh, they can take a union cab. How many mothers do you know that are going to put their three kids or four kids or two kids in a cab and go vote? Not many I know, particularly in a pandemic. So I want to ditto what you said, Joe. It's hard to talk in these masks. Ditto what he said and tell you, we got to figure this one out, folks, because I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired. I live in that community. I can't talk about the basketball court or the pickleball, so I wrote it down. I can't talk about little whatever that is going in the A1 because I thought it was going to be a community center, but I can't talk about voting because it is a right. And you guys, most of you probably weren't even here when they made that decision. Again, who in the heck made that decision? There's two ladies that I see all the time on Anton Drive. I'm a Lyft driver. And they're in their wheelchairs, and they'll go down Anton, and then they'll go around to get to the Quick Trip. I think they're sisters. And one day they stopped, and I gave them a mask, and, oh, they were so happy. Imagine if those ladies could take their wheelchair and go across the street to Redeemer Church and vote. They can't roll their wheelchairs all the way up P.D., McKee Farms, that road right there. Nobody can walk on that road right now. So, y'all, when you make these decisions about people that live in District one, and we can work with Scott McDonald, whatever y'all need me to do, I'll go talk to them. I was on the board with him, too. We need to figure this out. Split it. People in ally deserve to be able to vote easily. People over by where I live at, Smithfield Drive, King James Way, need to be able to walk if they can. I like that we're doing the, I wrote it down. We can turn ballots in. I'm going to do that. I'm going to help people to get their ballots, and then we can take them to... and then we can take them to Heagle James Town Shelter. Thank you, Tracy. But we got to make things easier for us over there, because it's really hard living. And I love Fitchburg, do I really do? And I've been in Fitchburg for a year, so whatever we can do as citizens, like when you do these meetings, I know you didn't expect us to be here, but it'd be nice to have an agenda, because if I'd have known I was going to be this long, I would have went and got some coffee and came back. Um.
That's three minutes, ma'am.
That's my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, we got some people online. Uh, who do you want to go to first, Scott?
Let's go with Will Allred.
All right, Will, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Alders and city council members. My name is Will, and I live in the Pine Way neighborhood. Uh, I echo what Joe said about this being an equity issue. When I think about this issue, or I think about how it's more than just at a local level, how it's really representative of what is happening now. Embedded into the documents and the speeches and identity of our nation, we have the phrase, "We the people and the Constitution," and Lincoln speaks about a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And it was at the very beginning of this meeting, and in the mouths of schoolchildren, when they say, "With liberty and justice for all." And the principle of of for the people government is manifested physically in the state of Wisconsin, when we see the Capitol be the center of the city of Madison. Um, we the people have fallen short of this ideal. I think two offline governments have been created in the image of those who've had easy access to their creation. They have been by and for people who are wealthy, who are white, and who, and have often neglected persons of color and persons on the lower end of the socioeconomic spectrum. And we can do better. This is an opportunity to do better. I know that the resolution may not pass because of what Tracy said earlier about how you have to have the county standards line up, but this is an opportunity to give access and give voice to those who have long been neglected. So, I, whatever comes of the resolution, I would vote yes for R one seventy dash twenty. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Who's next, Scott?
Wendy Hathaway.
All right, Wendy.
Hi, there. My name is Wendy Hathaway, and I live in District Three. Thank you for having me. Um, I volunteer for several nonpartisan organizations to educate and register voters, uh, organizations like the League of Women Voters and the Voter ID Coalition. Um, and so being very familiar with this issue, I was thrilled about this opportunity to improve voter access. However, it's also very disappointing to hear that this might not get anywhere for twenty twenty. Um, I do appreciate Alder Maldonado, Alder Kraus, uh, Tracy Oldenburg and others for trying to find new and creative solutions, because we all together need to work harder to ensure improved access to polling places for the folks in our community who are among the most likely to face multiple barriers to voting. To echo Joe and my neighbors who have already spoken, this is absolutely an equity issue, and we all can do better and need to do better. I think the question we should be asking ourselves is, who are we and who is Fitchburg if we are not willing to put in the work to protect democracy and make sure every eligible voter can cast a ballot? So, if R one seventy twenty is not possible tonight or in the next fifty days, then I will turn my energy to next year, and I hope you all do the same, when redistricting and new budget discussions should allow for more and more accessible permanent polling locations.
All right, thank you.
Gene Musser.
Gene, all right, go ahead, Gene.
Mayor Richardson, Alders, my name is Gene Mustard. I reside at five eight two four Dolly Drive in Fitchburg. Um, I'm retired from work as a cardiologist, having worked for UW at Meriter Hospital. With Arlene Silvery, I co-chair the Fitchburg Progress Group, and I also volunteer with Legal Women Voters, as Wendy does, working in the apartment project. Um, I'm here in my individual capacity, not representing any of those entities, and I've reviewed both resolutions, one fifty-nine and one seventy, and I'll just quote from a note that I sent in July of two thousand nineteen to Mayor Richardson and to the council. I think that the District One polling location represents a very significant problem and potential disenfranchisement for residents of wards one and two. My request is that the city add a polling place west of Verona Road, possibly in the Redeemer City Church. Responding to my note, both Mayor Richardson and then Alder President Barr acknowledged the need to update and add new polling locations. I've reviewed the excellent supporting work that Joe Maldonado has done on this, and I would urge that the council act favorably, at least in Resolution one fifty-nine twenty. I understand that splitting the sites between wards one and two and three and four, as proposed in one seventy, may not be feasible due to the timing of the proposal as it relates to ballot printing, but I would urge the council to direct city staff to work diligently to explore possibly physically appropriate places to house a polling site for one and four, and a serious effort should be made to find the location west of Verona Road. Thanks for your attention.
All right.
Nice seeing you, Wendy.
All right, who's next, Scott?
Steve Arnold.
Steve, go ahead, Steve.
Good evening again, everyone. Um, I'm Steve Arnold, I live at twenty-five thirty Target Street. Those of you uh long-timers know that I have long supported uh better polling access for our North Fish Hatchery and Verona Road neighborhoods, uh, most actively starting around the time of the uh two thousand eleven redistricting process. Uh, it's always been uh the statement that we don't have the money to buy more voting machines and man more polling places. Uh, it is uh tragic that the um CARES Act funding uh opportunity will not be um able to be used. Um, one thing that has uh, I've not heard talked about so much, is the fact that in late August, bus service changed, and that Route Fifty-nine, which was running to the City Hall campus and by fires, Firehouse Number Two, New Firehouse Number Two, every hour, every day of the week, uh, has been discontinued again on weekdays, and the Fifty-two, which runs only as far as the Supertarget, uh, has replaced it again, or it runs to Oak Bank, I'll take that back. Um, I would like to, uh, I would like to have the council vote for one fifty-nine twenty, which I won't speak again on that. Um, we, the council should be doing the same thing in the longer term, I should say, in the medium term, for um Ward Eleven and Leopold School. And um, the model is the same, right now, the District um Three polling place is, none of our polling places are in the district, uh, but the District Three polling place is down at the Hotel, where I generally work as a poll worker. And um, again, that's a hardship for folks that live up around Post Road, Greenway, Cross, Coho, and so on, many of whom do not have private automobiles. So, um, I would recommend to the council that you look into, and to staff, to look into running the Fifty-nine, which, if you're not familiar with the transit system, runs from the West Transfer Point around the Orchard Point subdivision, and across McKee Road, past McKee Farms Park, and down to the City Hall Campus, uh, and it's a weekend-only route, but uh, uh, it would not be very much money, uh, and maybe CARES Act funding would be
That's three minutes.
Available for this.
Thank you, Steve.
Run the Fifty-nine.
Steve, that's, Steve, that's three minutes. Thank you, Steve. That's three minutes. Sorry.
I think I will speak on the other.
All right.
Other resolution, then.
All right, who else we got, Scott?
Elizabeth Ward.
All right, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name is Elizabeth Ward, and I live in District Four. I'm here to support the resolution. In the past ten years, voters have faced a number of additional barriers to voting, which is a basic civic duty. These include voter ID requirements, misinformation campaigns, and recent attacks in the post office. In two thousand seventeen, when the voting location was moved off a transit line, another barrier was added. I had the pleasure of being a poll worker in the spring and in August, and I hope to be able to do so in November again. And if you've been one, you know how impressive the clerks and the organization is. They have perfect setups, they have machines that fit in the right boxes, table of cots for the boxes, it's very impressive. Uh, so it gives me no doubt that they can overcome any challenges if this resolution won't work to making Redeemer work or finding a new location by the election. Given how organized they are, I'm a little surprised that new information was discovered only today, the day of the vote, and I believe the same thing happened last meeting, where new information that ruined the resolute, that made the resolution impassable, was discovered the same day of the vote. The people who do not have the resources to overcome barriers are those who are unable to drive or can't afford to drive but want to vote. People of color uh have more pedestrian deaths, uh, have many more pedestrian deaths than white people. Asking a community that has a large uh population of people of color to cross Verona Road and deal with the construction right now is unfair and adds to that injustice. Households in poverty spend more income, more proportion of their income on transportation than those with higher income, so asking a district where people, uh, part of the district is low population to figure out how to take a cab or an Uber um in order to vote is an additional unfair barrier on that population. So, I hope that if this resolution can't pass today, uh, there is a way to find a new location that is in a, uh, is walkable from the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Who else, Scott?
Shelley Malofsky.
All right, Shelley, go ahead. Oh, Shelley, you're unmuted. We can't hear you, Shelley. You're not the first. We still can't hear you. There you go. All right, now we can hear you.
Okay, I am a District Four voter, and I spoke at the August twenty-fifth meeting in support of the Redeemer Church resolution. Uh, I was going to talk about equity and disenfranchisement, like everybody else. I was going to talk about um, uh, um, the comments in other meetings about why don't we just wait until there is redistricting and annexation, and then we can do a one-and-done, and it'd be administratively easier. And I was going to suggest that administrative ease is not the issue in this coming election, it should be protecting people's rights. I was also going to mention that in past elections, voter protection teams have had complaints from people of color from, in Fitchburg, who, while trying to vote, were harassed by white voters. And I was going to mention the heinous flyers and papering that was done in recent days in Fitchburg with racist comments, and that therefore now is the time the city needs to step up and do everything it can to show the often disadvantaged neighborhoods that they are actually seen and their needs are being taken into account. But instead, I am going to, with great frustration, um, say, I I do not understand why we are at the position we're at right now. In, on June twenty-third, I went back and listened to the recording of that meeting. It was very clear, there were a lot of Alders, we're very interested in a fifth voting site, we're very interested in the Redeemer site, we're interested in somehow making this work for November, to have a more reasonable ex, an accessible voting place for some of these neighborhoods. June twenty-third, on August twenty-fifth, it was reported what the Redeemer location looked like. Now, again, on the day, two weeks later, on the day of the next time when resolutions would be voted, there was a report that it can't be done. In, on June twenty-third, I don't understand why there wasn't efforts to move heaven and earth to make sure that this could be accomplished, and all I can say is I'm so disappointed in this city at this point.
All right, anyone else, Scott?
That's everyone for one seventy.
All right, I have a bunch of emails to read, so feel free if you need to take a bathroom break or anything like that, it's going to be a few minutes. All right, uh, Carolyn Fisher, I'm writing to ask your support to pass R one seventy twenty and additional polling sites. Thank you. Uh, Kim Morris from Fitchburg, I've been a James Town resident for eight years, I've voted in almost every election, big and small, for fifteen years. Most of the elections I've skipped have been since the polling location changed from the old to the new fire station. The simmering inconvenience has affected my voting record, and I'm certain it has had an even greater impact on those that have transportation issues and other barriers to voting. District One needs two polling locations. Verona Road creates a physical barrier that is difficult and dangerous for pedestrians to cross. Previously, had been difficult finding suitable polling locations within the district. The Boys and Girls Club and Redeemer City Church are willing and able to provide these services with minimal cost to the city. There's no good reason to reject their offers. The western part of the city also needs accessible early voting and absentee ballot drop-off locations. This is especially important with the key road construction and the potential difficulties with the ability of the USPS to deliver absentee ballots in a timely fashion. City needs to use every available option to make it easier for citizens to vote. Ability to vote is important not only for the upcoming presidential election, but every election. Although people focus on the big elections, it is the smaller elections for representatives like yourselves that have the biggest impact on our community. This is John Grummel from Fitchburg. I ask that the council support Resolution R one seventy twenty in a time when there are too many efforts to restrain voting. This resolution makes voting easier for the residents in wards one, two, three, and four. It'd be nice to be able to walk to my polling place in less time than it takes me to drive to my current polling place. For those without transportation, they could be effectively disenfranchised for no other reason than not having a car. Support Resolution R one seventy twenty. This is Catherine Porwall from Fitchburg. Uh, my name is Catherine Porwall, I'm a resident and voter in Ward Two of Fitchburg's District One. I'm also a poll worker who began volunteering until the, during the COVID-nineteen crisis in order to replace elderly and retired and high-risk poll workers who cannot safely work the polls. I'm writing in support of R one seventy twenty. It is extremely critical for District One voters to have the ability to access their polling locations safely and without undue burden. The lack of public transportation to the current location for many homes in District One is too much of a burden and causes many to just not vote. And now with COVID-nineteen, it is even more critical for voters to be able to walk to the polls while taking a taxi or rideshare or bus, if it was even available, would be potentially unsafe. It is also critical that we have early voting options and drop boxes for absentee ballots on the west side of Fitchburg, not only to increase voting access for those who can't vote on the day, but reduce density of in-person voters on Election Day for COVID-nineteen prevention. With increased fears about the efficiency of the USPS at this time, increased load in the USPS due to the COVID-nineteen crisis, these options are extra important for voting access. They remain important after the crisis is over, but if there ever was a time to get this done, it's now. I look forward to working the polls in November with many increased, with much increased access to voting for my neighbors, and hopefully, most will be able to safely turn their absentee ballots early for myself and other poll workers to process on Election Day. Thank you. Uh, Jennifer Fenny, Fenny from Fitchburg. I strongly support the resolution to change the polling locations for District One. Our current polling location on Marketplace Drive effectively disenfranchises many citizens in our district. I live in the James Town neighborhood and find the Marketplace Drive location awkward to access even with a car. For residents in our neighborhood who do not have their own vehicles, getting to the new fire station presents an unreasonable obstacle to voting. Last thing we need in these times is to make voting more difficult. The proposed polling site at Redeemer Church, close to the fire station, is so much more accessible to our neighborhood. Please approve this resolution to ensure that District One citizens can exercise the right to vote. Nancy Arnold from Fitchburg. I register in support of a resolution, R one seventy twenty, change of District One polling location and split into two locations. William and Betsy Tischler from Fitchburg. The current polling location, District One, should be moved into the district by splitting it into two polling places, one on each side of Verona Road. This will improve access to them and help Fitchburg citizens vote more easily than in the past. With all the controversy about future voting, this would be a smart move for Fitchburg voters in the districts. Dave Carlson from Fitchburg. I urge you to approve Resolution R one seventy twenty and implement the steps it prescribes. Otherwise, if there is only one polling place for District One, voters in that district will face obstacles that voters in other Fitchburg districts do not face when they want to vote in person November third, and that is unfair. Is there any responsibility that our mayor, members of city council, or city staff have that is more basic than responsibility to make voting fair? Katie Tradineck. I would like to register my support of a resolution that splits District One's polling place into two locations, enabling citizens on either side of Verona Road to participate in the right to vote. Sonia Hackle from Fitchburg. I live at 4502 Pawnee Pass in the Dunn's Marsh area of Fitchburg. I've been able to sign up to vote absentee in the next election, but my husband has not done that. I found out recently there are neighborhood polling places far away from where we live. When I lived in Madison, I was able to easily walk to my polling place. Aside from this being a natural expectation for any polling place, it is especially important that there be a polling place for lower-income Fitchburg residents that live in the apartments in the King James and Allied Drive neighborhood. Not all of those residents have cars, and even if one voting adult in the household has the car, the others might not. The proposal to have two voting places for these lower-income areas is fantastic and comes at no cost to the city of Fitchburg. I trust the city of Madison to properly train their poll workers at the Allied Drive location. I think it will be far less confusing for residents who naturally will show up and think that it is the voting location for everyone in the neighborhood. Kudos to League of Women Voters, Voters and Fitchburg elders who made this proposal possible. If it passes unanimously and easily, this should be a no-brainer. Jake Johnson from Fitchburg. I wish to register my support for Resolution R 17020 at a second polling location within District One for the November election. Given the size and geographic distribution of this district divided by a major highway, the second voting location would be a great benefit to our city. We kind of should, should support this. I volunteered to work the polls at this November and having worked polls and registered hundreds of new voters each time, I know how crowded these locations get, and this is even more noticeable in districts with many apartment buildings where there are, and many people who need to register to vote due to an address change since voting last. Please support this effort and the effort to help let people know about this important addition. Thank you. Kristi Waters. It is well known that voters in marginalized communities who may have limited access to transportation and face the highest socioeconomic barriers face more challenges to voting than others. It is therefore essential that polling sites be placed to assure reasonable access for these voters. COVID has exacerbated inequities in our community. Supporting this resolution serves to provide more equitable, walkable, accessible polling locations for residents in Fitchburg's most transportation and income vulnerable neighborhoods. I urge you to support our most marginalized voters by supporting this resolution. Rachel Glazza from Fitchburg. I'm registering in support for the proposal to add two additional polling locations within District One to serve four voting wards. Approving this proposal will underscore the city's commitment to and value of civic engagement by ensuring equitable access to the polls for residents in wards one through four. I'm particularly pleased to hear of the Public Nonprofit Partnership mailing campaign to ensure residents have enough advance notice of their new polling locations, as well as the partnership with the city of Madison to ensure access for Fitchburg residents while alleviating some of the logistic coordination of this proposed location for Clerk Oldenburg. Thank you to Alder's Krause and Maldonado for their creative and community grounded work on this proposal. Tony Hartman from Fitchburg. Troops, please follow through with a yes on our District One Alder's Resolution to move and increase polling access for folks in that part of Fitchburg. Alder Maldonado's Resolution to defray costs makes it essential that it be done now. This important issue has been kicking around for years and needs to be made a priority. No more delays. Ethan Piper from Fitchburg. I register in support of Resolution R 17020, change of District One polling location and split into two locations. Wendy Nelson from Fitchburg. I register in support of Resolution R 17020, change of District One polling location and split into two locations. Bad Schumacher. I am writing in support of R 17020 to open two alternative polling locations in the city, allowing increased access for the citizens of Fitchburg to vote. As a member of the business community, I have a unique perspective. My business serves some of the most vulnerable members of our community. It's important that those with unreliable transportation have the opportunity to vote. Currently, the distance that citizens have to travel is unacceptable, especially if the person would be walking to the existing polling station from the affected neighborhoods. For the construction projects in Verona Road, McKeed Road, and the Badger State Trail, much of the pedestrian infrastructure is impeded. Participation in our elections is paramount and we need to make it as accessible as possible. Again, I support the opening of two additional polling locations, R 17020. Elvis McLepine from Fitchburg. I register in support of Resolution R 17020, change of District One polling location and split into two locations. Mayor Power from Fitchburg. I'm writing in support of the idea of splitting the District One polling site into two locations. This is a long overdue solution to the troubling problem of getting all voters to the polls. I commend and thank those who have worked hard to bring this to the table. Sean Hathaway. My name is Sean Hathaway and I live in District Three in the Quarry Hill neighborhood. I strongly support R 17020, which moves the District One polling place back into the district closer to where residents actually live and addresses concerns about space by creating two polling places at no cost to Fitchburg or its taxpayers. This plan to create easier access to voting for the citizens in District One at no cost to the city is such an easy win for Fitchburg that not allowing it to happen would seem like actively working against the people you're supposed to be representing. I encourage you to do the right thing and vote in support of this resolution to make voting easier and more accessible for your citizens. Sarah Rubin and Joshua Rubin from Fitchburg. We are district residents of District One and we strongly support Resolution R 17020. While the current polling location at the fire station is not unbearable, it is not a convenient location for most of our neighborhoods, even for those of us with the reliable transportation. Lot fills up quickly and if there's any traffic at all, it is a challenge to get in and out via McKeed, which is only made worse with the current construction. For residents who did not have easy access to a vehicle, sites closer to the center of the populations for each ward is important for ensuring easy access to the polls to protect the right and responsibility of voting. Therefore, this resolution seems like a reasonable, civically and fiscally sound proposal and we stand with the proposed plan to move voting to the two neighborhood sites, leverage support from the Madison polling staff at one, if that is allowable by law, and provide notice to all residents using the funds provided by the League of Women Voters. Barb Benish Grandberg from Fitchburg. My name is Barb Benish Grandberg and I've been a resident of Fitchburg for eight years. I'm writing support my, writing to register my support for R 17020 for the creation of two polling sites in Fitchburg. I cannot attend the meeting myself, so I'm also asking that the following statement be right at the meeting on my behalf. Right to vote is the cornerstone of citizenship in the United States. Participation in the democratic process for every single citizen is what our country is supposed to be about. Unfortunately, our actions as a nation frequently fall short of our ideals. A right without access is not a right. Many of my neighbors are people of color who rely on public transportation. The current polling place is inaccessible to them, leaving them disenfranchised. Order disenfranchisement is a tool of systemic racism and as a city, as a state, as a nation, we need to be working to end racism in all its forms. I urge you all to pass R 17020 and permanently establish two polling places in Fitchburg, making voting accessible to all citizens, especially our neighbors whose voices are most likely to be silenced or ignored. Mike Leon from Fitchburg. Writing in support of resolution to create two polling places in District One. The objectives of voter accessibility and safety are easily met with minimal costs. Moreover, pro-voting rights nonprofits are offering to pick up logistical and financial costs of communications to voters of new polling sites' locations. Current situation where one polling site is located across the street, a some 30-minute walk from our home in James Town neighborhood is absurd and has been for several years now. Please pass Resolution R 17020 in support of Fitchburg voters. Jacqueline Captain from Fitchburg. I'm writing in support of R 17020 to open up two new voting sites in Fitchburg to facilitate easier access to the polls. Thank you very much. Melanie Sacks from Fitchburg. I'm writing in support of Resolution R 17020, which establishes two walkable neighborhood-based polling sites in District One. Neighborhoods served by the proposed new sites are home to many people without access to convenient transportation to the current polling station. Good access to the polls is a cornerstone of fair and equal elections, ensuring that all US citizens are able to vote and have their voices heard. I offer you a firsthand example of how the current situation affects voters. For years, I have been a city of Madison poll worker at Revival Ridge and Allied Drive. As you know, the Allied Drive neighborhood is chopped up into a patchwork between Madison and Fitchburg. It's not always clear in which city a certain address is located until an official listing is consulted. Many new voters or new residents come to Revival Ridge thinking it's the neighborhood polling place, but find out it is only for those living in Madison. Often, a voter would come to Revival Ridge only to be told that, no, they actually live in Fitchburg and need to find a way to get all the way over to the new Marketplace Fire Station off PD. Too far to walk there and back, so a cab ride is the only way to get there, and the waiting time for a cab on Election Day was really long. This proved the last straw for some very frustrated voters. When you have these two polling places, you take a vital step to strengthen our democracy, level the polling field for all our voters, and make the fine ideals of our country an absolute reality. There's no cost to our taxpayers. It's a win-win. Thank you for supporting Resolution R 17020. Micah and Amy Ledusa from Fitchburg. We want to express our support for the addition of polling, polling locations to accommodate District One. We need to do all we can to make it as easy as, to vote as possible, especially during a pandemic. Voting needs to be accessible, walkable, or near public transportation within the actual district boundaries. It's crazy that the district whose residents have the least resources to get to their polling place have a location outside their district. I know those changes have been discussed in the past and we need to address it for an election, which is going to have high turnout. There appears to be an effective plan in place for communication to residents, as well as having low cost to the city of Fitchburg. As such, this seems like an easy change to make and gives enough time to prepare communication to district residents of the change. I urge you to support the resolution. Miss Anna Buckman from Fitchburg. I'm a resident of Fitchburg and I strongly urge you to support Resolution 17020, establishing two voting locations in District One. There's no excuse for further delays. Thank you for your time. Don Fairley. With respect to the council and mayor of Fitchburg, I ask for your support of Resolution R 17020 for District One. As we know and agree, voting is not a privilege, but the constitutional right of every American. As Americans, in order to practice that right, we should all be able to have reasonable access to polling stations. Due to the expansion and development of Fitchburg, was that, which has been reinvigorating, by the way, and the growth of our population, that is no longer the case. In order to uphold that right for our growing number of Fitchburg residents, I ask that our council and mayor join our city's residents in supporting Resolution R 17020 and an additional polling place for District One. I'm confident that this will be done as it only makes geographical sense and I have complete faith in our district leadership. I also ask that this email be read aloud to confirm the acknowledgement of my request. This is from Brian Klein. I'm emailing today to request the council strongly considers adding polling locations in Fitchburg. Having one in the James Town neighborhood, like we did up until just a couple of years ago, would be huge. For people in my neighborhood, having to cross Verona Road to vote is a huge inconvenience and for some, a little, literal roadblock to voting. Thank you for consideration. Franny Lyons from Fitchburg. I'm writing in support of Resolution R 17020. I'd dearly welcome if you read the Setra Council meeting on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Fitchburg is a vast and diverse city of over 35 square miles, housing everyone from low income to upper middle class. For our city to grow and flourish, every one of us must be heard and valued. Having more accessible polling places for Fitchburg citizens is a vital way of ensuring that each person's voice and vote can be counted. We live in a very divided and unstable country right now. Every effort that our city can make to help unite us through participation, through accessibility, through community supports and outreach, it will get us so much closer to prosperity, to equality. Safe and easy to get to polling locations for everyone can only help to enrich our collective future. Polling locations in the wards one and two, Redeemer City Church, and wards three and four, Boys and Girls Club and Genowine, encompass two Fitchburg neighborhoods that are closer, close together in land, are worlds away because they are divided by Verona Road. This road almost surgically separates these two areas. Making sure that people who live on both sides of this divide can vote easily is essential to ensuring that there is equal representation for the entire city. I'm grateful for the League of Women Voters in the city of Madison to volunteer their efforts to get the word out about accessible polling locations to Fitchburg voters, but also fully support my tax dollars being used for these efforts as well. Given the chance to, I would vote for this specifically. Before I sign off, I want to share something about me. I live in the James Town neighborhood with my spouse and three children. We have a pretty nice house, two cars, two cats, and stable jobs despite the pandemic. We know neighbors in Fitchburg who do not have what we do. Some of the people close to us have lost their jobs, cannot afford to fix their cars, are struggling to feed their own children and letting their beloved pets go because they can't afford to care for them. Every single day, life is harder for them than it is for us. This is not the Fitchburg I want to live in. While we cannot, as citizens, as elders, as politicians, as community activists, solve everything in one goal, I firmly believe that, one step at a time, we get closer to being part of a city that cherishes every resident within that takes into account the needs of each one of us, from the most needy to the most privileged. Beginning in the crazy surreal year of 2020, may we move forward and reach out to those whose voices struggle the most to be heard. During this pandemic, we can and must make things easier for those who are having the hardest of times. So voting is not a hardship, but a priority. I will highly support Resolution R 17020 and every future motion that gives Fitchburg the chance to become stronger, better, and more united. Thank you very much for your time, attention, and empathy. Amy Olstead and Christopher Herrick from Fitchburg. Allow us to simply state, this resolution is a no-brainer. We completely support this resolution and frankly are surprised there is opposition. We'll be transparent. This resolution will not benefit us in any way. Vote early or vote absentee. We have the luxury of a flexible schedule and access to our own vehicles to get to the polls for early voting. We have the luxury of reliable internet access to request our own absentee ballots. These are luxuries we are painfully aware not all of our neighbors have. We don't think in good conscience we would want them to have to choose between their livelihood and their civic duty to vote in any election. I ask the council to vote in favor of this resolution with us. Our thanks to Joe Maldonado and Dorothy Krause for putting together this resolution. The simple and elegant solutions to the problems many voters in our neighborhood will face this November. Kirsten Huesleman from Fitchburg. I'm a Fitchburg homeowner in the Allied Drive Dunn's Marsh neighborhood. I'm writing to let you know that I am in support of R 17020 and I'm calling on all of you as my elected representatives to do the same. I believe that establishing these two new polling places is an essential part of building equity and access to voting in our historically underserved James Town and Allied communities. Many of our neighbors in these areas face transportation and other barriers to accessing the current polling site, which is outside of the district it is designed to serve. By establishing the two new polling sites, we not only eliminate some of these barriers, we also address issues that our community faces with the spread of COVID-19 during our current pandemic. While you are voting yes to these new sites, I believe you are moving our community towards a more equitable democracy. This is Kathleen Kuchenbecker. I am writing to support, express my support for this resolution. I believe as someone who worked in the field of microbiology and performed respiratory viral testing for decades, that the more polling places provided to spread out the voter numbers per location helps not only to maintain social distancing, but also allows time for effective cleaning. Ideally, there would be high numbers of absentee voting with many secure drop box locations. Times are definitely challenging right now and our government should be working to find ways to meet the ever-changing needs of the people. This includes finding ways, including changes of law, to handle recording and securing the count as they are received, the large shift to absentee votes. It should not be an objective to see how many votes can be disqualified because of the recently created strain on the postal system or time constraints for county votes. Thank county leaders as a whole have been doing a great job trying to manage the pandemic. This is Daniel Easley from Fitchburg. Distinguished council members of Fitchburg, the Boys and Girls Club is a five-minute walk from my home. I would like the Boys and Girls Club to become a polling place for the village of Fitchburg. This is especially important to other residents of my neighborhood who have transportation issues. Thank you for your consideration. Diane Olson from Fitchburg. I register in support of Resolution R 17020, change of District One polling location and split into two locations. Bianca Tomasini, I believe, from Fitchburg. I'm writing to you in support of Resolution R 17020, which would establish two new neighborhood-based polling sites in District One. I'm involved in work promoting access to electoral process to disenfranchised citizens. And this resolution is an excellent opportunity to close the gap in access to voting rights. There is the documented correlation between propensity to vote in person and lower income levels, which speaks to the need for access to polling places in areas where folks may not own a vehicle. The two new sites being proposed at Redeemer City Church on 5356 King James Way, and the Boys and Girls Club of Dane County on 4619 Genowine Road, are within walkable distance from population centers in Fitchburg. In contrast to the present polling place, which is a 40-minute walk away from the most populated areas. Most of the operational costs and logistics associated with these new sites are planned to be covered by the League of Women Voters in the city of Madison. This resolution represents a clear and excellent opportunity to serve the people of Fitchburg. Urged to support and facilitate each, every citizen's right to vote. David Garter from Fitchburg. I strongly support and urge passage of this resolution, R 17020, that will create of two polling locations within Aldermanic District One of the city of Fitchburg. Ryan Huesleman from Fitchburg. As a resident and active voter of District One, I write to you today pledging support of R 17020 and I urge you all to follow that with one of your own. I would be well pleased to have this message written into the record at the meeting this evening. R 17020 would once again provide my fellow citizens and I an opportunity to exercise our right and duty to vote within the boundaries of our own district. The creation of two polling locations for District One will be a significant way of putting action behind words and intention of building equity in our city. Finding ways to reduce the wait times, congestion, and crowding of indoor polling places should be a priority in any election season, but in the era of COVID-19, these things are be a priority in any election season, but in the era of COVID-19, these things are even more important. Having multiple polling places in our densely populated district would allow voters to have a voice and their representation, while more easily maintaining social distancing and reducing the risk of exposure to those who would normally need to take public transportation to the existing out-of-district location. Having the financial concerns of this initial election covered also provides a much more gentle on-ramp and allows further flexibility with future costs. Andy Carmel from Pittsburgh. Today, I am writing to you in support of twenty twenty Resolution 170 that splits the District one polling location into two. Thank you, Alders Maldonado and Crowsey, for bringing it forward. I'm pleased to see this resolution offered because we know significant barriers to voting exist in the northern part of Pittsburgh. Many voters do not have easy access to transportation that can get them across Corona Road to vote. Placing a polling location west of Corona Road will make voting on Election Day accessible to more voters in Pittsburgh. While a change of polling location within three months of an Election Day is a fast turnaround, I believe the LWV of Dade County's commitment to informing voters will help curb any confusion. I ran for county board in the special election in June twenty nineteen. Voters in District two and three did experience confusion when the city chose to consolidate all polling locations to City Hall. A small local election where only two candidates were responsible for getting the word out about the change, I did encounter a few folks on the doors who went to the wrong place. Once they were informed of where to go, they still voted, and the confusion was temporary. These folks also had cars or bikes readily available to make the short trip to City Hall. In an election of November's magnitude, there will be tens more organizations and campaigns involved to ensure that voters know where to cast their ballots. Many hands make light work. Ultimately, I believe that the overwhelming benefit is to make voting accessible to voters who have been disenfranchised by transportation issues. Hope to see this change become permanent. As we've discussed, times of the essence, please vote yes on Resolution 170. Paul Insu Fever from Pittsburgh. I'm writing in support of splitting District one into two sections. This will clearly ease voting for many folks, and we encourage your continued work on making voting as easy as possible for Pittsburgh residents. This is Dale Zahorek. My name is Dale Zahorek. I currently serve as the chief inspector at the District one polling location. This will be the fourth presidential election that I've been a poll worker, and my third is a chief inspector. I'm neither for nor against this resolution. November third, I'll report to my assigned location and perform my duties to the best of my abilities. However, I feel compelled to address several issues that I want the council to consider in regards to this resolution. No polling location is an ideal location, as all polling locations are secondary use to their primary purpose. Luckily, we have multiple locations to choose from. The question is which location best meets the needs of the city clerk's office, electors, and the poll workers. I view the issue as a choice between convenience versus safety. Yes, the church is more convenient for a larger portion of the district, but I have reservations that the church provides a safer environment for the electors and the poll workers. The safety issues that are concerned or need to be addressed at the new location are: one, the uneven sidewalk leading up to the main entrance; two, the step-up or drop-off of the entrance-exits doors; three, the entrance-exits doors being side-by-side, will have electors crossing in front of one another upon coming and leaving. These are not issues currently at the fire station. Using the map diagram attached to this resolution would indicate to me that if we have a number of electors at any one time, the line that would form would have to form outside. At the fire station, you would accommodate a line of approximately fifteen people before the line would form outside. Regarding the map and the proposed routing, this is not a viable option. First, you no longer designate poll books separate from registration. This is now check-in, and is done by one group of poll workers. Also, absentee processing needs to take place in the same area as check-in because of the networking used to process the information. Finally, ideally, the whole operation would take place in an area that can be monitored by the chief inspector. This would preclude the use of multiple rooms. Other convenience/safety issues presented in the attachments that I would like to address include: one, biking to the polls. The church does not have a designated area or site to secure a bicycle. Two, crossing McKee Road at grade level. Based on current construction, it appears the bicycle bridge would be available for crossing by Election Day. Three, crossing Corona Road. Traveling from the east to cross Corona Road would require electors to walk along the frontage road for a portion of the hike, as the frontage for a portion of the trip does not have sidewalks. From a safety standpoint, I am of the opinion it is safer to walk along a bike path than it is the side of a road. Finally, COVID-19 social distancing. We have identified some of the pandemic risk at the fire station. That is because we've held two elections there under these conditions. I hope that knowledge has allowed us to keep the electors and workers safe and healthy. I am not so confident about the proposed location. My fear is that with the space available and the social distancing requirements, that we will encounter slower processing times for electors to get through the process. An anticipated shortage of available voting booths due to social distancing may result in backups at the ballot table, check-in, and entry into the building. Eight weeks out from Election Day, I am leery that all the safety issues at the church will be adequately addressed. Thus, I believe the choice you are to make is one of convenience over electors and poll workers' safety. Thank you. There's not a name on this person, but I register in support of Resolution R 17020, change of District one polling location and split into two locations. Kim Grafenauer from Pittsburgh. Due to prior commands, and I am able to attend the city council meeting tonight in person or via Zoom, so I'm asking that this email be read in person at the meeting. I'm writing today to express support for R 17020, a resolution being put forth by Alder Joe Maldonado. Eleven District one on Genowine Road. In fact, and the thought of having a polling location right here in this neighborhood excites me a great deal. I know so many of my neighbors rely on the bus, which makes voting difficult, as there's no easy route to our current polling location on Marketplace Drive. That polling location isn't even located in our district. It's also not an easy walk. My family has walked up to Bereks before from our home, and it takes about an hour. That's from the Dunn's Marsh area. It would be a long walk indeed from the King James area. It's a heavy burden to put on people to vote. District one is the most densely populated district in the city and the most racially and socio-economically diverse. Many of the residents in this district live in apartment complexes or duplexes. Some have vehicles, some rely on public transportation. Having two polling locations within walking distance for so many constituents is a smart move that'll enfranchise so many more voters. This is not just an issue of convenience, but an issue of equity. In a statement put out in June, Mayor Richardson said Pittsburgh will be better and will lead the fight against systems of oppression. I challenge you to make good on your word. For generations, people of color and the poor have been systematically disenfranchised. Pittsburgh itself disenfranchised voters when it moved District one's polling location out of the district three years ago to a location that is difficult, which is difficult to access without a reliable vehicle. This proposition is your opportunity to make good on your promise, to make Pittsburgh better, and to lead the fight against oppression. The support of Redeemer City Church, the Boys and Girls Club, the city of Madison, and the League of Women Voters is clear the community stands behind this measure. Urge you to vote in support of R 17020 today. This is from Casey Johnson. We want to express again our desire to host voting for the good of our neighbors and our city, whatever capacity that might look like, whether a portion of our district or the whole, our church is willing to offer a building for these purposes. In voting weeks, we reserve Monday through Wednesday on our calendar, so proper setup and teardown may occur. We will also not require any fees from the city, as this is something we're willing to offer for free as a good neighbor. Here to help for the good of Pittsburgh. And Casey's the pastor at Redeemer City Church. All right. Did anyone show up online else? Okay. Then that is all I have for residents. And I guess, I don't know if there's any thoughts. I mean, as alluded to, we can't split into two locations, so we can either amend this resolution or vote this one down and talk more about the other resolution. Either one's an option. Gabriela.
Wasn't there a statement from Frances Huntley Cooper? I know she was on video, but she had to leave. I think she sent an email.
I guess I can look up email. It'll take me a minute. Okay, from Frances Huntley Cooper, Pittsburgh resident. I am Frances Huntley Cooper, and I have lived in the Jamestown community since nineteen seventy-five. I also served as alderperson in District one for two terms before becoming the mayor of Pittsburgh. I'll be brief with my comments. I support R 17020, as we need to provide polling locations for all residents of the city. These locations need to be accessible without barriers for voters wondering where do I vote. Jamestown has a large population that can no longer walk a few blocks to the former voting location, fire station number one. The current voting location is across Corona Road with construction and no safe way to access Marketplace Fire Station without venturing out in traffic. Our alder, Joe Maldonado, has worked hard to build partnerships with no cost to the city to encourage voters to go to a location closer to their residence in this resolution. Also, the goal is to get out the vote for all citizens and let's keep the doors open. Partnership with the city of Madison, League of Women Voters, is nonpartisan and will assist the city of Pittsburgh with their voting responsibilities during COVID-19. Thank you for having voting drop boxes for folks to return their completed ballot for the November election. Any questions, please reach out to me. Okay, looks like I have one more here. From Kathleen Wagner from Pittsburgh. Register in support of Resolution R 17020, change of District one polling location and split into two locations. All right. All right. Questions, thoughts? Or we can just vote? Oh, Dorothy, go ahead. Dorothy and then Gabriela. Go ahead, Dorothy.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to just vote. I see at least a couple of viable. When Dave was on, he did not mention that Joe and I, last Wednesday, spent time in the building with him and his folks, and we looked at the initial concept drawings for what he's planning. And he's planning on leaving the biggest part of a big furniture store open, open air. He said that there will be Wi-Fi there. There's... He's going to be there again tomorrow at ten thirty. What I would like is to find a way to keep one or both of these open and get Tracy down there to look at that building tomorrow while he's there and see if it looks, as though it might be something that would be viable. It's four doors away from the church, so it's very close, and four business doors closer to the neighborhood even than the church. He did say that he would be willing to make it a permanent polling place. So I'd like to give that serious consideration. The other thing I'd like to give continued serious consideration to is changing the entire district to vote at the Boys and Girls Club. That gym, I think, is big enough. We've been working, Joe particularly gets a lot of the credit here, has been working closely with Mary Beth, the city clerk in Madison, working out the details of all this. I would like to have a continued conversation with her to sort out whether it's possible for the entire District one to vote at the Boys and Girls Club along with the Madison polling. I think it was Tracy, but I'm not necessarily absolutely certain. I'd asked how many registered voters they have in that Madison ward, and the answer was like eight hundred. So that's not nearly as many as we would have come through. So what I would talk to Mary Beth about is to have us use the majority or all of the gym space and have Madison, if it's possible, to use the same space on the other half of the building that they used for the August election. I'm not as certain that that space is big enough for them to do their entire, but I would like to continue asking that question. Since we have to combine, we can no longer split them. We have up until thirty days before the election to make a final decision. I believe that would allow us to finalize a polling place at the next election. So what I'd like to spend time tonight doing yet is figuring out which of these two resolutions would be more appropriate to either put forward or postpone until next time while we have continued discussions with Dave about the A-one building, with Casey about Redeemer. I think Redeemer is probably out as the whole, for the whole district. But between the A-one building and the Boys and Girls Club, I think we can continue discussions a little bit.
Yeah, I think my initial thought would be since you can't split the district, that you'd vote down six and then postpone five until the next meeting, I would think. Tracy, one other thing I wanted to verify. I believe that when you talked to Mary Beth today, the city of Madison still does not have official permission from the Boys and Girls Club to use that location yet. They're hoping to get it this week, but they actually don't even have the final okay yet. Is that correct from what she said to you?
That's correct. When I talked to Mary Beth, they had permission in August to use the hallway of the Boys and Girls Club, so they didn't use any of the rooms. They were just in the hallway, and they had some crowded issues. And they were waiting to hear back this week if they did have permission to use the Boys and Girls Club. And I don't know if anybody's reached out to see if we have permission to use the Boys and Girls Club.
I'm willing to make that ask if need be. I used to work there, so definitely have a relationship with staff.
All right. Have Gabriela next.
I was just wondering if there are other locations that we might consider. One of the things I brought up in finance was the KL Engineering Building that's right across from the fire station. That was used for the Burby Derby, like, check-in last year, I recall, and it was a pretty big room, and they obviously have volunteered it for community purposes in the past. So I don't know if that is something that we could also consider as a location, and it's right in that same area with lots of parking. So is that something we can look into?
We certainly can. I think the question with any of these would be, how often do you want to move the polling location? Because it might be a temporary thing. I don't know how permanent that would be, but if it's there in November, and then if it can't be there in spring, for example, then we have to move again. And then after a district change, you might find a even better spot. Maybe it's Dave's location or something like that, and then move again. So I guess that would just be one concern is, you know, how confusing is it if the election location keeps changing? But certainly another area we can look into.
We talked to the county about the fire station. I know that they haven't, they aren't up and running, but is somebody working there? And is it possible to go back to the old fire station that's now owned by the county? I shouldn't call it the fire station anymore, the county building.
Yeah, that's another place we're looking at, actually. And we're reaching out to them to figure out. I don't know if we would for November, but frankly, that might be one of the better options because it is a county building and not a community building. I think that's one of the, especially in COVID and the pandemic. I mean, that's one of the concerns I even have about the Boys and Girls Club is that we're in a process of a huge spike in COVID cases. What if the Boys and Girls Club says, you know what, it's too much of a risk to bring community people in here, or another location, frankly, too? And I don't believe the county is going to have people there working at that building, which, again, if there are future pandemics or if this doesn't go away, could be another benefit to that location if they're willing to do that. We've reached out to them, we haven't heard back yet. Other comments, questions on this one? Joe, go ahead.
I just want to add to the piece about sort of, I guess, outdoor hazards, you know, in terms of the sidewalk. I actually have spoken with Yana Williams. She was going to speak today but didn't get around to it, and she actually said that she leads a group of girls. She said she'd actually be willing to, you know, not only engage like some of her volunteers and staff with their organization, but also some of her youth in, you know, either kind of warning folks and just making sure to protect folks if they're, you know, tripping hazards or anything like that. Just wanted to add that to the conversation.
All right, and Tom.
Tracy, I guess I just have a question for you in reference to this. Can you just clarify the polling station? If I heard you right, two of them cannot be at this time. One of them, well, let me back up. Can we change the polling place for District One to another location for the November election? Let's just talk about that for a second. Is that a yes or a no? It sounds like you've talked to the county, you've talked to other people, and it's not as simple as it sounds, or I don't want to put words in your mouth. What, what, for people even still up watching this, is this something we can do or not do?
So what we can't do is split the wards. So we can't split a polling location in two. We can move a polling location in its entirety, but by law it has to be done 30 days prior to the election, which would make September 22nd the latest that it could be approved to be moved somewhere in order to, unless you hold a special meeting, I don't know. But it cannot be split and needs to be moved in its entirety for November.
30 days out is what you just said?
All right, Tracy, go ahead.
Joe, I, I have a question for you regarding the Boys and Girls Club. Do they have one entrance into the building? I don't know the layout.
Yeah, I mean, they have several doors that, that lead into the building. There's, I believe, three. So there's one on the, my, my orientation is way off, but there's one from the parking lot. If you're facing the building from the parking lot, there's one to the right. And then if you go sort of on the opposite side near Belmar Park, there's one in the back. And there's two separate spaces, just for like note of the layout. So when you walk in, I spent five years of my life there. When you walk in, if you go in the main reception area and you turn to the left, there's a, you know, pretty large cafeteria. And then if you go to the right, there's a hallway. And then immediately like first door, when you walk in, there is a large gymnasium. I would say the gymnasium is probably about three times the size of the, the cafeteria. So just thinking logistically, if, again, if Madison and Pittsburgh were to share, I, I would say probably the ideal would be that like Madison go to the left, Pittsburgh go to the right, just because we would have more registered voters. I think last you and I talked, there were 800 registered voters in that, the ward in Madison. That included the neighborhood. And I think, I don't remember what you said, but I think you said something around 2,000 in Pittsburgh, so it, it would make sense that Pittsburgh gets sort of a, a larger space than Madison.
So logistically, and this is, this is part of my responsibility to, to point things out as far as things to think about. Concern would be parking, if it's a shared space with another municipality. A concern would be with the routing of people entering and leaving the building. And a concern would be of, you know, signage and confusion as to who goes where in the building. So those are some concerns to think about in a shared space and social distancing.
Yeah, I would imagine, I would imagine if you had two separate spaces, you would probably need to have separate entrances. And I think the, you know, the, the, the side facing the parking lot could be one entrance and then the side, a little bit to the right, could be another. That's just kind of an initial thought to that.
All right, anyone else? And six here? All right, so I don't know if people are kind of on the same page where I would vote down six and table five or postpone five, but Gabriella, go ahead.
Um, I actually would, I mean, someone else can do this, but I would actually suggest that we table this. I just want to be honest. I, I know that there's a technical reason why we can't do this resolution, but I have no interest in voting down a, a resolution to expand access to voting, even if it's not actually possible. So I don't know. I, I'm not going to vote no. So if it's easier to table it, maybe that's a better option.
You could postpone indefinitely, then you're not voting no on it. Julia, go ahead.
Yeah, my question is because Tracy mentioned that if we want to move the polling station, the deadline will be September 22nd. So my concern is that September 22nd, we have a council meeting. We are correct?
Yeah, that's why it's that, that's our last council meeting before 30 days out from the election.
So if we are planning to postpone this or table, we need to table to next meeting. And then we are going to have a better idea what Joe and Dorothy wants to do with the, you know, the resolution and they want to move it to, you know, the Boys and Girls Club? Or they're coming with another alternative? But I think if we are going to table this, we need to come the 22nd with a resolution that we need to vote on.
Yep, that's our last.
I want to know what we're going to do now because I have on fused.
I think you're right that, you know, the next meeting we have to, that's our kind of last chance to, to approve some kind of change. And I don't think postponing both resolutions makes sense. I would think that because you can't split in two locations, you would either deny or postpone indefinitely six and then bring five back with some additional changes to it. That's what I would think makes the most sense. Dorothy, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, there's good things about both of them. Five is the single location, so it would be just a change of location. But six has all the community involvement language in it. And I don't want to lose that language, working with the League of Women Voters to help us to alert citizens or, yeah, I guess it is citizens are the only voters, residents where the polling places would be and things like that, as well as the language about working with the City of Madison and others. Is it reasonably possible to vote down one and pull language from that one into the one that we retain? Is that?
Oh, yeah, I think that number five would have to get, you know, updated regardless. And you can bring some of that language from six into five because, you know, as it is, I don't think five quite fit works anyway. So I would, I would expect that you would update five and you can bring in some of that language from six for that. I've got Joe and then Julia. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. If I'm, if, if I'm thinking about how this would work correctly, and, and there's also the issue of the budget amendment, so I would, I would probably say, and I, I just want to ask before I put it out there, but I would say if, you know, we place 170 sort of permanently table that and, you know, vote yes on 159 with the amendment that we will look into whether or not, you know, either of the two alternative locations in question are suitable and, and vote based on that. So if, if, if that makes sense, so, you know, if we would vote, if, if, if we would go through these locations and find that one of them would work logistically and present that to the council at the next meeting, that we would, you know, move forward on one of those. But I think we would need to actually look at the spaces between now and the next council meeting.
I don't, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, and have reasonable time for, you know, Alders to be able to process the information.
Yeah, I don't know if people feel comfortable voting on something without knowing the final details. I've got, Julia, go ahead.
So I think, I think we need to keep Resolution R 170 because it's a change of District One polling location and a split into two locations. We should amend that and remove the, a split into two locations and remove and, you know, and, and table the number five forever. You know what I mean? So I will do that because, you know, it has the same, you know, it changed the district and so we remove the un-splitting two locations. And we table that, we, we amend that, and then we table that next week. The other one is, and the other thing I want to mention is if we look for another location, it should be a location that we know it could be kind of permanent location, that we are not going to come and change it again in April. It's a location that we are going to use it in April and in the next election. So this is what I feel more comfortable with the Redeemer Church or a Boys and Girls Club location. We used to use the Boys and Girls, from what I remember, we used to, people used to vote to that place. And so this is my recommendation.
Dorothy, go ahead.
I'm comfortable with that.
Go ahead, Dorothy.
I was just going to note that 170 really is built upon 159. So it contains the vast majority, if not all, of what 50, what 159 had in it. I, I guess there were some, some things that were removed that I'd pointed out to Joe. But the base of 170 is 159, so I have no problem keeping 150, 170.
Gabriella.
Yeah, another important part of 170 is the commitment from League of Women Voters to be a part of getting the postcard. So I think that there's some value there in, in making it added to that to make it clear that it's not a split, but it's just a movement from one location to another.
All right, does someone want to move to postpone R 17020 for two weeks?
No, I think first we need to amend it and then postpone it to next week, to the next council meeting.
Okay, I've got Tom next. Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, we're just going around and around, and I'm trying to help the two Alders in District One. Let's get this thing going. Joe, I'm picking up exactly what you said. I'm picking up exactly what you said. Let's indefinitely postpone 170 and 159, bring back at the next council meeting and not trying to do this now. That gives Dorothy and Joe time to go out there and bring us back something. It's their district and bring it back to us, which would be the next meeting. That's it. That's it. Dorothy, we can't do this tonight. Julia, we can't do this tonight. And you heard from the clerk, and why don't we just indefinitely postpone 115, one, did I get my numbers right? 170, definitely postpone, you're not taking it off the table. And then you can't do it tonight. You got to give the Alders time to go back to the district and talk to people. And then 159, the two Alders, I'm relying on you, to bring it back to next board meeting. In fact, I'll move it. 150, all, resolution 170, oh, 17020 indefinitely postponed?
I don't, can I speak?
Well, I have a motion on the table. I need a second.
No, no, I, can I speak first?
Nope, I have a motion, so.
No.
We can't. But if there's not a second, then it doesn't matter. All right, so there's no second, so the motion does not pass. All right, now you can speak, Julia. Go ahead. Oh, actually.
I want to, I want to clarify something that Tom said, you know? I am not trying to do something tonight. I am trying to help the district of Alder One. I am trying to say that the best option, because we have the Wisconsin Women Vote, they already are committed to the, to the Resolution 170. So, so we say that we can, my, my, my recommendation is to, to remove from the table number five and then amend number six and remove, amend it and remove the second part of the resolution and say un-splitting to two locations because the rest is the same on 159. So we remove all the language that they say, a split into two locations, and then we give it, Dorothy and Joe, the time to look for the location that they want to bring to us next, in two weeks, and then we vote. So I am, so I want to clarify, Tom, because you are saying stuff that I didn't say. I want to help them. I know that we are not going to resolve anything tonight, so I want to make that clear.
Before we go further, I need a motion to, to extend the meeting.
I'll move that we move the meeting for another 20 minutes.
Second.
All right, signed by Sarah. All in favor of extending for 20 minutes, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, we got 20 more minutes. Joe, I think I saw your hand.
I'm comfortable with Alder Ratafata's amendments. So I'd like to, I would like to propose that we, and I don't know if I need to separate these two out, but I, I propose that we table 159 indefinitely.
We can't do 159 yet. Yep, we'll do that next.
Oh, sorry. I, I propose that we, or I move that we postpone, that we alter Resolution 170-20 to remove the section regarding two polling locations and that we postpone it to the September 22nd common council meeting.
Okay, so we'll take this piece by piece. First, you would want to move to amend our Resolution R 17020 to remove the split into two locations. So first you want to do that.
Correct.
All right, so that's a motion you're making?
Yes.
All right, motion by Joe, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Randy. So right now, the motion is to amend R 17020 to just be change of District One polling location. Anything further? Dorothy, go ahead.
There, there's a lot of language in there talking about two locations. I don't know if we want to go through and clean the whole thing or if we're talking about just the title. But if we're talking about just the title, legally, Tracy, can you change the title without changing the number? Or would, would it end up being a new resolution? In the past, I've heard, I think at the county, that you cannot change the title of a published resolution number.
Do you know that, Tracy?
I, to, to be honest, I'm sorry, I don't know that offhand. And I defer, is Pat there? Pat?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, we would, we would, in the, in, in that situation, we would need to change the title and give it a new resolution number.
And then we would also, I expect all that language to be cleaned up and some more information added between now and the next meeting as well.
That's correct, and we can coordinate that with sponsoring Alders.
Okay, Dorothy?
Oh, I, I think it would be a crazy thing to start nitpicking through something that's going to be significantly changed throughout anyway. So I would suggest just leaving 170 as it is. Postpone that to the next meeting, knowing that that's going to get changed in the process and not nitpick it at all tonight.
Yeah, and I would postpone the other two indefinitely, yes. I mean, the existing resolutions, I'd postpone indefinitely.
Yeah, I mean, that's the other options. You can just postpone both indefinitely and come back with a brand new one for the next meeting and bring all the, use all this information as well.
That would be the appropriate way to do it, yes.
It'd be a little cleaner that way. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to amend Resolution R 17020. All in favor of amending it to, say, change of District One polling location, say aye. Oh, so hold on, sorry, sorry, Sarah, go ahead. Oh, so hold on, sorry, sorry, Sarah, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Sorry, just so I'm understanding Pat's comment, so we can't change just the title, right? That, so it wouldn't work out. So this, for this recommendation of changing to removing the two polling locations, that's not, like, logistically easy to do since it's sprinkled throughout the resolution. And so, like, clerically, the way to handle it would be just to postpone it and not actually go through and start striking language because it potentially may need to be changed completely. Am I understanding correctly?
We can change it, if I'm hearing Pat correctly, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong. We can change it. The recommendation is to just postpone both indefinitely and come back with the updated language and resolution.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, so first we have to vote on the amendment. So all in favor of amending resolution R one seventy twenty to just say change of district one polling location, say aye. And oppose, say nay.
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 All right, I believe that's a no. All right, so we still have resolution R one seventy twenty. And, I mean, you can vote it down or you can just post-table indefinitely. I mean, we got the motion, so you can just vote no on it.
Then we table to, I am concerned about table indefinitely and then something happened and for some technicality that we don't know, then we have a surprise on September twenty-second and, you know, um, you know. So I prefer that we had to postpone to next meeting, one of them, I don't care.
Uh, Dorothy, go ahead.
I would move first to indefinitely postpone one fifty-nine.
Oh, you can't do that right now, we can't do that right now. We have a resolution on the table for R one seventy twenty, we still need to resolve this.
Okay.
And then we can go back to one fifty-nine twenty.
Can I make a motion to postpone one seventy twenty to two weeks?
Yeah. Second.
All right, I heard a second, Shannon, I believe. All right, so the motion right now is to postpone R one seventy twenty until the next meeting in two weeks. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, so that one's postponed for two weeks. Now, back to number five. Uh, I don't know, Dorothy, if you want to do the motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll move to indefinitely postpone one fifty-nine.
Mr. Mayor, we have a, uh, member of the public who'd like to speak on one fifty-nine?
Uh, yep, I know, hold on a second, I'll get there. Yep, I need a second to Dorothy's motion.
Second.
All right, um, because it's postponing, we can have comments. Steve, do you want to comment on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing all the sausage made, made, uh, takes me way back. I just wanted to finish my comment, um, that I was cut off on before. I did, uh, text the, the county clerk, uh, he did suggest drop boxes. Uh, it's not as good as a polling place, but it's certainly worth considering. And I just wanted to suggest that the council in the next two weeks consider, uh, using the Route Fifty-Nine bus on weekdays instead of the Fifty-Two. It will go all the way to City Hall for people that need to, um, would like to, to vote early in person and, uh, run it on Election Day so that, uh, folks can take the bus to fires, Firehouse Number Two and run it fare-free. And that will remove the financial barrier and you will have a fixed cost for Metro. And since it's a regular route, there should not be a problem with them running it, it's not like running a charter. So, um, thank you for all your work on this and, uh, I just wanted to put in those other mitigations since it's clear what the sentiment of the council and the public is regarding, um, voter access. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Gabriella?
I was just wondering, could, Tracy, could you give us a sense of what your schedule might look like in terms of investigating some of these other locations? Like, is this something that you might have time to do this week where you look at Little Johns and, um, or at, you know, K L Engineering or the other fire station or whatever. Boys and Girls Club, sorry. Yeah, all the locations that you're considering, like, is that something you, you and your staff might be able to tackle this week? Or what would, what would the schedule look like?
Um, I, I wouldn't have time tomorrow, I've got meetings tomorrow. I'd like to reach out to the chiefs to see, you know, what their schedules are. I guess it would depend on when ballots are delivered. They're supposed to be delivered either Thursday or Friday this week. And my priority is getting them prepped and ready so that they can be out in the mail by, uh, by law, no later than the seventeenth. And I have over seven thousand absentee ballots that I have to get out. Uh, ballots need to be prepped, they need to be stacked absentee, they need to be initialled, they need to be sorted by polling locations. Labels need to be printed, they need to be prepped on the envelopes, stuff, postage. So there's a lot of work coming up in a very short amount of time.
And I believe you also.
By law.
And Tracy, I believe you also told me that you're getting hundreds of requests per day for absentee ballots or some people are canceling their absentee requests, but every day you're also getting hundreds of requests?
Correct, so even while I've been here, I've been kind of going back and forth between the with vote program and the meeting and, um, working at processing some of these requests. So yes, they're, they're coming in.
So extremely busy and has been. And in fact, um, thank you, Tracy, for working this past weekend on a holiday weekend, which I don't think is very fair for staff. I know there's going to be many other weekends coming up that you're going to be have, have to be working as well. But I can tell you right now that the clerk's department is extremely busy right now and putting in way more hours than really should be expected of them. All right, uh, so we have the motion to.
Can I say something? I, I don't know what happened with my video.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
But if, but if the council is asking Tracy to, you know, to find some time, you know, because this is a, this is kind of like a priority too, you know, um, I want to know how we can help you. And then if you, you have a second person, your assistant, can she go in your place to take a look at the location? If you are too busy, you know, can someone in your department can go and take a look at the location? Or you have to do that?
Oh, you're on mute, Tracy. Tracy, you're on mute.
Um, I feel that it's important that I know, um, the logistics of the place that are, are being talked about. So I feel that if somebody needs to go for staff, that it should be me and not put on, um, somebody else that doesn't really do the planning and planning as far as, um, the polling locations.
All right, so the motion, oh, Jill, go ahead.
I, I think to Gabriella's initial question, are there, are there certain tasks that, that you have or that your staff have that volunteers can lighten the load on? I'd also like to point out that, you know, um, I, I agree, it is, it, it is definitely a, a heavy workload. But also keep in mind that, um, you know, as Alders, um, I think we've been working pretty tirelessly on, on, on this issue in addition to, at least for me, a full-time job and a family. So I'm dedicated to walk, you know, side by side with you, but I think the priority issue right here is, uh, figuring out if I'm going to, you know, introduce this, um, or introduce a new resolution, uh, at the next meeting that I've at least got the, you know, the pledge for support to, um, be able to investigate these alternative places that we're looking at.
All right, so the motion is to postpone number five indefinitely. Uh, go to the vote, all in favor of postponing indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, that is postponed indefinitely. Uh, going back up to resolution R one twenty-seven twenty, Gabriella, do you want to do a motion on that?
Uh, I move to approve R one twenty-seven twenty, adding hazard pay for Fitchburg City poll workers for the November twenty-twenty election.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Signed by Dorothy. Uh, I do have two people who had sent in emails I wanted to read real quick. First is Rachel Glazza from Fitchburg. I am also registering support for the amended resolution R one twenty-seven twenty drafted by Alder Gerhart and co-sponsored by Alder Maldonado to increase poll worker pay by two dollars an hour. Poll workers, especially now, are vital to the voting process and compensation should be provided to ensure that by giving their time to this process, they are fairly compensated in alignment with the cost of living. Thank you to Alders Gerhart and Maldonado for their work in this proposal as well. And then, uh, Barb Benish-Granberg. My name is Barb Benish-Granberg, and I've been a resident of Fitchburg for eight years. I'm ready to register my support for R one twenty-seven twenty and hazard pay for Fitchburg City poll workers for the August twenty-twenty and November twenty-twenty elections. All right, uh, sorry, Gabriella, now do you want to speak to changes that you have to this from before?
Yeah, so the plan is, um, you know, it was very clear that the, there was not a will to create hazard pay. So, uh, as an alternative, um, because the council and my, my opinion seem to agree that, uh, poll workers are underpaid, that we increase pay for the November twenty-twenty election and we use contingency funding from the budget to do so. And I spoke with, um, Misty about that possibility, she said there's seventy-five hundred dollars of contingency funding available for some, for a project like this. Uh, so the plan is to increase the pay to be more in line with what other municipalities around us are, which is in the ten to eleven dollar range. So I have proposed, um, an amended resolution that removes the language about hazard pay and adds, um, language that says it's going to be a two dollar per hour raise for any poll workers making eight or ten dollars per hour. And I've calculated this based on twenty sixteen presidential election poll worker hours that Tracy sent me. And then I added an additional three hundred and fifty poll worker hours, um, with the pay bump. You give me just the pay bump version of those two hundred and fifty hour, three hundred and fifty hours for, uh, additional absentee ballot preparation, which Tracy indicated would, would, would take additional poll worker hours above and beyond, uh, what would happen at the polls. So can I share my screen, is that okay to do?
Uh, I don't know if she can or not. Yeah, she can, yeah, can.
Let's do it. Okay, so I sent this to, um, all of you at the council earlier today, but, um, the justification basically says what I just said, it just gives the specific numbers. And what that yields, um, you know, that additional two hours of pay plus a three hundred and fifty additional hours above and beyond twenty sixteen presidential election yields around five thousand dollars increased budget. And Misty pointed out we need to account for benefits as well, so that pushes the total up to fifty-four hundred. So to be clear, that means that if we do a two dollar pay bump for all poll workers making eight or ten dollars hour, for all of the hours related to the November twenty-twenty election, it would cost the city fifty-four hundred additional dollars, um, going into the city clerk's, uh, wage budget. So the amended resolution, um, changes the language in specific ways. I reduce, I eliminated all the language around hazard pay. I added a line about, um, how poll worker pay has not been increased and it's below the rate of other municipalities. And I changed the amount per hour, two dollars per hour. And then, um, I changed the actual budget amendment to amend the general fund budget by transferring fifty-four hundred from contingency funds to the city clerk, uh, wage and benefit budget. So that is the proposal and I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, I saw, can I make a motion to amend it as we see right now? Is that, can I do that?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
All right, I'm making a motion to amend resolution R one twenty-seven twenty as, uh, shown on our screen right now to change it to a pay increase.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Signed by Randy, I heard him first. All right, um, so first it's, um, I guess approving the amendment, but questions, comments in general? Yeah, Tom, go ahead.
Misty, are you still out there?
Is Misty still on?
Yeah, I am.
All right, go ahead, Misty.
Um, so as far as the pay increase for these workers, what's the percentage? Have you figured that out?
I haven't, but I could, so two dollars on an eight dollar range would be twenty-five percent and twenty percent. Actually, those are pretty easy ones, it's just like.
It's like.
Twenty, okay.
So twenty percent for the ten dollar people increase and a twenty-five percent for the eight dollar per hour poll workers.
And you've never seen anything like this in the middle of a year to increase somebody's pay, have you?
Uh, not that I'm recalling right now, um, not that it hasn't been done for sure, I just don't. Not that I remember.
Okay, that's fair. And Tracy, how does this fall in line to Sun Prairie, Middleton, Manona, to these other jurisdictions?
Uh, that would put us more in line with what they are paying their, their election inspectors and chiefs.
And did I hear this right?
And this is something we were working on, um, budgeting, working in the budget for twenty-twenty-one.
Did I hear this right, that the word hazard is paid has been eliminated from this whole amendment?
Yes.
I eliminated all the language and words, um, related to hazard pay and it just refers to a pay increase. And so actually, what I'll do right now, um, in terms of what you see, is I'll change it to, oh, hang on, just one second. Can you all still see the amendment?
No. Uh, hold on, hold on, first it's getting a little out of control, make sure people get called on. And we also need a motion to extend the meeting again, because it's been twenty minutes.
Motion to extend the meeting by thirty minutes.
Second.
All right, all in favor extending by thirty minutes, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, so we got another thirty minutes. All right, and now Gabriella, you want to share your screen again?
I'm going to share my screen again, and so what I've done is I've eliminated the red, the changes. So this is the precise wording of the amended resolution. Is this something I should read out loud or does everyone just kind of read it to themselves? But I think you can see that I've eliminated all references to hazard pay.
Yeah, so just, I guess, to follow up on Tracy's comment, I, this, these are actually the dollar amounts I currently have in the budget for twenty-twenty-one for these people. So there would be consistency with what, I, I gotta make sure that there are, uh, uh, health insurance rates aren't way crazy out of control, but this is the plan for what I have in twenty-twenty-one. I guess, Misty, the only question I would have is, this is the contingency funds and I don't know where we are in contingency funds that we have left, we, there's no end in sight to this pandemic. So I guess that'd just be my only concern is using contingency funds for something like this when who knows what other surprises are coming in store for us as we continue with this pandemic?
Yes, so the dollar amount we budget is twelve thousand five hundred dollars per year. And as a side conversation, that's really low for a city of our size for a contingency amount, but that's the amount that we're doing right now. Uh, we did spend five thousand of it on an appraisal of Town Hall or the Town of Madison conversation. So there's the seventy-five hundred that's left. And I do think it's important to reiterate the comment that you just made, Erin, that this increase is in line with what's being proposed or planned to be proposed for twenty-twenty-one. So it's not a structural deficit, which we all know I have strong feelings about and because it is being planned for, for the future as well. This is really an early implementation of something that we're hoping will continue to, to be included.
All right, other comments at all? Uh, first we need to vote on the amendment, so Gabriella's amendment to go to the ten and twelve dollars. And so this just needs a majority, I believe. Uh, so all in favor of the amendment, which changes it to the ten and twelve dollars, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, so then we have the amended resolution now. Any further comments at all? All right, this one needs two-thirds because it is a budget amendment. And I guess I'll just call for a voice vote unless some people say no and then we can go real call. But all in favor of approving resolution R twenty-seven twenty as amended, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that's easy enough, that passes, all right.
Thanks, all.
Then I believe the only thing left is mayor's report and Alder district reports. Uh, we can go through the district reports first. Uh, we can go through the district reports first. So I'll start with District Four this time. Tom, your report?
I just have one thing. Um, it's actually for the library board. I've received a number of calls in reference to the library not being open. Verona's library has limited hours. And don't get me wrong, I'm sure they're doing distancing and there are special things going on. But uh with school going on now, I think it's real important that we get that library open as soon as we can in a safe manner.
All right, Randy?
I think the only comment that I have or is the um, Fitchburg has a new uh uh Bar Brewery, Hop House. Yes, in District Four, uh for those that are still watching. I've been. It's a, it's a, it's, it's, it's a, it's, it's a great place to have a, have a hamburger, a beer. Uh, I'd suggest trying, trying the place. That's all I have.
All right, we'll go to District Three. Shannon, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I don't. Not at this time.
All right, Sarah?
I don't have anything at this time either.
All right, how about District Two, Gabriella?
Yes, uh, I'd just like to reiterate some of the points that Tracy made earlier. Uh, and well, first, thank Tracy for, thank you for um organizing those ballot drop-offs. Really appreciate it. I think that's really important uh for this upcoming election. And so to reiterate what Tracy said earlier, there will be two opportunities to drop off your absentee ballot in a place other than City Hall. But you can always come to City Hall and drop your ballot off, your absentee ballot. Uh, but those two opportunities are gonna be, the first one is Saturday, October tw- October seventeenth from ten AM to one PM at the Hugo Jamestown Shelter. The second opportunity is gonna be Saturday, October twenty-fourth from ten AM to one PM at the McKee Farms Park Shelter. Is that correct, Tracy?
That's correct. And I can't take all the credit. Alder Radifrada was involved in that, so as well, so.
And then uh also the the Dane County Voter Hotline, uh if you need help on Election Day, go ahead and put this in your phone. Six zero eight two eight five two one four one. That is the Dane County Voter Hotline and you'll need to leave your name and your address uh in addition to your message. Um, and then also we are still in need of poll workers and now you get a pay bump, thanks to the council, uh support from the council. So uh please, please apply to be a poll worker if you are able and willing. Um, we really appreciate it. This is what um citizenship is all about, is sometimes making sacrifices. And then last thing I want to say is that um I was really delighted. I was invited to be a part of a Boy Scout Board of Review, um which is a final interview and a vote on whether or not to um grant an Eagle Scout designation to a to a Boy Scout. And um I'm a Girl Scout Gold Award recipient myself, so I was really proud to be a part of this board. And we had a great conversation with this really wonderful man and we did end up awarding him as Eagle Scout. Um, and just overall, I think scouting is a, is such a valuable activity. It's a great way to to teach uh young people service and leadership. And um, you know, th- those are qualities for uh important qualities for a citizen in a democracy. And I I myself believe it was a big part of my development and led me to to run for office. So uh really a big supporter of scouting and I'd I'd love to talk with the mayor at some point in the future about um recognizing scouts in some way. And hopefully those scouts that choose to earn those higher awards, which takes a lot of work. I want to congratulate our our new Eagle Scout. Thanks.
All right, Julia.
Uh, yeah, so I have two things to mention. Um, tomorrow night, uh five o'clock, we have a meeting with the Seminole Village Neighborhood Association, Gabriella and I, and some staff um are gonna be participating in the meeting regarding the intersection Seminole and McKee and the removal of tree and and some of the issue they are having with noise, lights, um, and the new retention pond. So uh thank you for Bill, Paul Key, and Sa- um Scott. And I think the chief uh is of police is sending someone to the meeting, so um so so we have a meeting tomorrow. And then the other thing I want to tell you is something personal, but it's also uh it's gonna be um interesting, the connection with Fitchburg. I have been appointed to the Board of the Overture Center, um so starting in September. And and I think that the first question that I ask is, can an elected official be there? And I say, yes. Um, you know, we have a one of the other for the City of Madison in the Board. And the idea is it's great to have this connection with municipality to, so um, you know, to to cooperate in an artistic, you know, activity. So um, so it's, I think that this is how we see the connection, that how we can be more active, the city of Fitchburg with the Overture Center. So um, so I want to share that with you, but I wanna be representing also the city of Fitchburg in the Board. Okay, so that's it.
All right, and District One, Dorothy?
The only thing that I wanted to mention, anybody that um travels McKee Road, um, the intersection of McKee and Spoke is gonna be closed all day tomorrow. Presuming, it was going to be today. Um, they changed it because of rain to tomorrow. I'm presuming that it will happen tomorrow, but that's like all day from seven AM until whatever at night. Um, they're going to be doing grading across that intersection. And then I think it said that it's going to stay gravel through what period of time? I, through, was it through the winter? Are you still on, Bill?
Yeah, I'm still here. Um, they actually, I just got an email earlier this evening that they pushed that construction off until Thursday morning. So it'll be Thursday all day, Thursday, and uh they'll they'll have a gravel. I think when they come back through and pave it again, that should be probably three weeks.
Okay. So kind of people should be alerted for rough spots at the very least for the next three weeks there. And then Thursday closed all day.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Joe?
Hey, I got a few announcements. Um, so as you probably heard from uh Dave, Heidi, um, we're gonna have our first uh restaurant or our only restaurant in District One, um, Little Johns. It'll be a pay what you can restaurant. They're gonna use food waste from um grocery stores throughout the area um and be able to provide food for folks in need. So if you can pay a dollar for a meal, pay a dollar. If you can pay thirty, pay thirty. Um, I think it'll be a really big asset, especially to this neighborhood. So um stay tuned for his official announcement. I know this is on our council meeting, but I think he's gonna roll something out. Um, and it'll also provide opportunities for veterans as well as um youth. He's committed to kind of working together with uh, you know, any youth-serving organizations that that come into the area. The um Dear Diary Program has begun doing programming for Team Girls in uh the Redeemer City Church. You know, they, obviously they're limited due to the pandemic, but um they're serving, I believe, between ten and fifteen um girls, specifically girls that have been involved in the uh juvenile justice system or at risk of going into the system. Um, so you know, directly people doing work right now um to, you know, address some of our most pressing issues with uh youth that need it the most. Um, and on Friday last week, um, the League of Women Voters, um Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated and Voces de la Frontera um did a um voter registration slash voter information drive in um the Allied Dunn's Marsh neighborhood. They um parked up at Allied Park and walked throughout the Madison and Fitchburg parts of uh the neighborhood and um hit a pretty large, covered a pretty large um ground. Um, we plan to continue to do this work. I'm thinking it'll probably be Friday afternoons, but I still need to just uh confirm with volunteers to whether or not they can make it. But there were um almost twenty volunteers um last Friday and I don't see that sort of wave um of support easing up. So if anybody's interested in going door to door um or just um kind of being available in the park to be able to uh catch people and help give them information about voting, um, I would be glad to um get you plugged in. There's also, we also have a QR code, so you can actually just let somebody take a picture of uh the code and it directs you to the My Vote website. Um, so it it really kind of helps make things a lot easier. Um, if folks don't wanna, you know, mess around with like the paper uh voter registration forms. Um, and that is all I've got.
All right, I got a few quick things here. Uh, one, I want to thank our police department for handling a very tough situation at the movie theater last Friday. It was about four hour long where they were working with someone who was having a mental health crisis. And it did end about as ru- as well as you could expect. And uh a lot of that is due to the work they did. So thank them for their work with that situation. Uh, also, the plan is next week, Friday, the budget should come out. We're supposed to get the final piece of the puzzle is really health insurance rates, which we're supposed to get next week. And so next week, Friday, look for that. Also, uh, many of you know Scott from Fact TV. He's here in the room, kind of organizing things for us, doing a great job. Thank you for that. I also got a letter today from Verona High School thanking him for the great work he did with their virtual graduation this year. So I just wanna kind of recognize you for that and thank you for that work. It was a really nice letter they sent, uh thanking him for the great job he did with that. The, I don't know if I mentioned in here, the new bike bridge over McKee Road is supposed to be open at the end of September. So that's coming up soon. And then last year, I started a Mayoral Awards, which I'm gonna do again in October. And I recognized a residence, a business, and a city employee. Uh, we're not gonna be able to have an event because of COVID, but I am going to still recognize uh one person or organization, all three of those categories. Um, I'm working on that right now. I'm sure I'll do something with Fact TV as a video, something like that. Days to be determined and winners to be determined, but uh that is coming up. And then the last thing I just wanted to address, I've heard from many people on council, many staff members, people in the community, even our our one media person, that these meetings have gotten really long. It's eleven thirty-four right now. And in talking with staff, one of the things that I I'm going to start doing in future meetings is I think, you know, I spent thirty-four minutes reading emails on the one topic today. And if there is something that has more than five emails on a topic, I am not gonna read the entire thing. I'm gonna make sure that you all get it like we do right now. I think most of the time everyone gets these. I'll make sure they get forwarded to all of you and then I'll read the person's name and where they live. If it's Fitchburg, Madison, if I have that, and if they're for or against it. So, you know, Julie Jones from Fitchburg in support. And then just go through it like that. And we'll also include that in the minutes. I'll give those to Tracy as well, so she can put those in the official record. But we gotta find ways to shorten these meetings and that's one way that we could do that. And I wanna make sure that we still, I'll still say those people's names that they registered for or against it. But as for the detail, we'll put that in a minute. So I'll make sure that all of you get those emails. But we gotta find a way to shorten these meetings a little bit and that's one way we can do that. I think some communities don't even read emails, frankly. People can still come in and speak and all that. But I think some communities don't even read the emails that they get. So um that's one thing that I will do going forward. And that's all I have. The next meeting is in two weeks and community hold is two weeks and one day. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A big motion to adjourn.
Is there a second, Shannon?
Sure.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.